I will call this meeting to order on Tuesday, September the 8th, 2015. Want to welcome everyone. Got a good crowd. Everybody take a deep breaths, okay? Very glad to have with us tonight from the Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God at 4100 King's Springs Road, which is a great church. Pastor Christian, this is an Italian Spanish name. Italian? Salino?
Salino.
That's close enough. He's going to come forward this time and give our invocation and also lead us in the place of flag. So would everyone please rise?
If you're willing, would you bow your hearts with me as we approach the Lord? Father, we do approach you tonight. We approach you boldly, we approach you with humility. Father, tonight there may be some robust discussions. Tonight there may be some passion on both sides. But Lord God, we believe in our city. We believe that even so many years ago, Lord, when the people got off the train and they came and they birthed this city, they believed that they were doing something that was bigger than simple human beings had the power to do. They believed they were operating under the calling of God. And so Father, I pray tonight that you would just simply come and fill this place with your peace, with unity, Lord, and with your wisdom. Lord, let those who lead be reminded of the great charge that it means to lead people in an elected office. And Lord, let those who are here, they have an opinion, they believe what they believe very strongly. Lord, let them come with humility and with boldness, God, as they present their opinions before their leaders. Father, we do ask you to come and be a part of this meeting tonight for the sake of our city, for the sake of our brotherly love for one another. We ask you to have your way and guide us with your wisdom and your counsel. In your precious name, we say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those that are looking for a new church or maybe just moved to Smyrna, I'm sure the folks at Life Church at 4100 King's Springs Road would love to have you. I think, Christian, don't you play the guitar?
I do, sir.
See, I was there. They have a very lively choir. It's a good deal. Thank you so much. Item two, we have some agenda changes. Item E and F on the agenda, which is a public hearing, which is a zoning request for the property at 2680 Grady Street, that, once it comes up on the agenda, will be tabled until, that will be tabled indefinitely at the applicant's request. Item F is the rezoning at 1091 1107 1121 Bank Street. That's also Preacher's Brothers. That has been requested to be tabled till September the 21st. So, once we get to those items on the agenda, they will be tabled. I think those are the only changes that we have. We have a new interim city administrator tonight, Michael Jones, to my right. This guy right here. He's been here two weeks already. We're looking forward to him staying another two weeks. We're doing it one step at a time. So please don't scare him tonight. We're glad to have you, Mike. Under the mayor's report, we got a proclamation recognition of the Constitution Week, September 17 through 23rd, 2015. The National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and there's like eight of these beautiful women down here, just pristine, that I met before the meeting. Terry Nulowicz is going to read that proclamation. So if you ladies want to come up to the podium.
And I'll take a moment to recognize who I think we have in the, here tonight with us from the Field Lewis Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We have Anita Mashburn, who is the chapter regent, Elaine Zecher, the Constitution Week chairman, and members Carol Palmer, Patricia Powers, Nina Alexander, Vicki Hoffman, Sue Ellen Dennis, Anne Aime, and Helen Story, and Jennifer Bennett, who is the Director of Community Relations here in the city. She is also a member of this chapter. Some of the members here tonight have very interesting and famous ancestors. These are their patriot ancestors. And Elaine Zecher, for example, the Constitution Week chairman, her patriot is Benjamin Franklin. And actually, if y'all want to go across before we go through this and you can identify who your patriots are, and I've got to find out who my patriot is. My aunt Nancy Ashley was the, she just finished off her term as regent for the Highland Park Chapter in Dallas, Texas. But I'll, we'll go from right to my right to your left.
Thank you. My patriot is Captain William Troop from Bristol, Rhode Island.
My patriot is John Gardner from Pennsylvania, and he was a private.
My patriot is Sergeant John Atkins, and he was from Virginia, and he was in Washington's Continental Army.
My patriot is Swan Rambo from South Carolina.
My patriot is Nathaniel Page from the state of Virginia.
My patriot is William Daniel from North Carolina.
My patriot is Hugh Caldwell from Poncton County, Pennsylvania.
My patriot is Captain Thomas Lee from North Carolina, and later from Tennessee.
And my patriot was Jesse George. He was a private from South Carolina. He was one of Marion's men, Francis Marion, the swamp ox.
Mayor Bacon, my patriot was Benjamin Franklin. And City Council and citizens of Smyrna, I'd like to say a few words on behalf of the Fielding Lewis Chapter of Marietta. We are here to support the people by celebrating our Constitution, America's most important document, which provides for a more perfect union in the United States. The Constitution expressed the character of a nation founded on the republican principles of the Declaration of Independence. It was drafted 228 years ago on September 17, 1787. So thank you very much for having us, and we're here to celebrate and to commemorate this wonderful document that has our liberties intact. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now let me read the proclamation to everyone here tonight in the audience and at home. This is the proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna for Constitution Week. Whereas September 17, 2015, marks the 228th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I A. Max Bacon, via virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Smyrna in the state of Georgia, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
Your timing couldn't have been any better for us to present this proclamation. You're going to see a lot of that Constitution work tonight.
Present this to you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
If you turn around, you get a good picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[759.16]
Well, good evening, everybody. I too will be brief. As you're all aware, the emergency medical response is a significant portion of what we do in our section of public safety in the fire service. And we're excited to have a new medical director that we've had since July the first, Dr. John Knox. And Dr. Knox, to our great delight, has been very, very interactive as a medical director with our department. As a matter of fact, he's already been in and met with the staff and the EMTs and the paramedics across all three shifts, even down to teaching ACLs. And he wants to be very involved and hands-on, so we're excited about that. I wanted to say thanks to Lieutenant Tommy Bates. Lieutenant Bates has been doing an in-house EMT class, Emergency Medical Technician Class, began in June. We've got seven of our staff in that class, and they will be graduating, so we'll have seven new emergency medical technicians by the end of October. We're proud of Tommy Bates and Lieutenant Bates and the work that he does. We took delivery of a brand-new ladder truck last week. It's a big, beautiful, red-and-white Pierce 75-foot aerial device. It's part of the SPOCH project. It's going to be probably another three, maybe to four weeks, until we actually get it in service. We've got to ensure that all the equipment is installed and mounted, and we have the appropriate training for all the apparatus operators across all three shifts. But we do intend to have a formal dedication ceremony. Look for that hopefully within the first week of October, and we will make formal announcements. And I mention it tonight because we would like for it to be open to all. So we'll have the actual date and the specifics on our webpage within the next week or so once we actually have the date. We encourage anybody that wants to to come out and be a part of that dedication ceremony. And finally, as the mayor just mentioned, this Saturday at Adventure Outdoors upstairs in Remington Hall, the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation, from the hours of 7:00 to 11:00, will have their annual Public Safety Foundation Heroes Benefit Gala. It's the largest fundraiser of the year that the foundation does, and a significant portion of the money that goes towards taking the underserved children shopping in December comes from this gala. So we encourage anybody that's interested to find out about the foundation or this event specifically, or especially for tickets, to visit smyrnapsf.org. And that was all that I had.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
You don't think you're leaving with this many people in the house, do you?
Scared to leave.
The house, nobody laughed at that. Go ahead.
Well, I saw Laker Goodman back there, so... No. We've had some exciting things. Police Department recently became partners in education with Belmont Hills Elementary School. And myself and Deputy Chief Harvey, as our first official act, got to swear in the school safety patrols. And that was pretty cool. It's some great, you know, young children, both boys and girls. And, you know, they had a real nice event planned out. They had parents there and had, you know, they had cake instead of doughnuts. I figured they, you know, with the police coming, they would have had doughnuts for us. But, no, it was a good thing, and we're excited about, with the new principal out there, we've got a lot of good things we're planning on doing with them. The Detective Division, I know recently you saw in the news where they had a pretty significant burglary arrest. And without going into great detail, how they came about making the arrest was pretty phenomenal. But, you know, it cleared up a lot of arrests here in Smyrna, as well as in Cobb County's jurisdiction as well. The... Also, we had the Smyrna 5K race this last, on Labor Day. And this was a fundraiser that was combined with the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation, along with the Optimist Club. And the very first race was very successful. We had 221 runners there. And, you know, we're real excited with it. And the, once again, it helps raise money for the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation, but the Optimist Club was a partner. Of course, I got stuck working on both ends, being a member of the Optimist Club and also on the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation Board. But the Optimist Club also donates money for the shop with the hero, and which is such a great thing for us to get to take those young children Christmas shopping. And, you know, it's always so heartwarming. I'll never forget the very first one I did. A young man spent all of his money buying gifts for everybody except himself. And so I, you know, I ended up paying for the rest of, for him to buy something. That was pretty remarkable for somebody who doesn't have anything to think about everybody else. So we're real excited about, you know, about being able to raise more. The more money we're able to raise, the more children who wouldn't normally have a good Christmas we're able to help out. We also got a chaplain's police academy, starting on the 17th of this month. For our chaplaincy program, you know, we have more than one chaplain. Like, Fire Department has one. Of course, they say we, you know, for obvious reasons, they say we need more. But our program's a little bit different than their program. And, of course, ours is better, but, you know, but it's a good program. And as soon as they graduate, you know, we'll present them before the council. And so you'll get to meet each and every one of them. But with that, I'll entertain any questions. Okay?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
You have to tell everybody who you are, since you're new.
Okay, I'm Kristen Robinson. I'm the interim finance director. And life is busy with us. We're in the middle of our year-end close. The auditors for our financial audit will be out, sorry, they'll be out on Monday. So that audit will start, and will probably go for the next couple of months. Also, we are about to send out the property tax bills. I know that's going to get me a lot of fans here, but those will be going out end of this week or the first of next week. So those will be coming out.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thanks.
It's her very first time. Any other department head? Okay. How long are you going to take? Okay. It looks like about a quarter of an inch thick.
I just wanted to, we held qualifying this week, or last week, actually, August the 31st through the 2nd, and I would just like to read the candidates that qualified for our upcoming election, November the 3rd. For mayor, Alex Bakary. Also, A. Max Bacon. Wade S. Lineka, that was, that would be for mayor. For city council, Ward 1, Derek Norton. And Melanie C. Pritchett. For city council, Ward 2, Andrea Bluestein. She is the sole qualifier for that ward. City council, Ward 3, is Terry Anulowicz. And Bentley, Brandon Bentley. City council, Ward 4, Alan Dunn. And Charles Corky Welch. City council, Ward 5, Jerry Jacobs. And Susan D. Wilkinson. City council, Ward 6, Tara Simon and Doug Stoner. City council, Ward 7, is Ron Fennel, and he is also the sole qualifier for Ward 7. And that's all I had to say. That didn't take too long.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Cute little bear, Lance. Okay, thank you all so much. We'll move into item 4, land issues, zones, and annexation. Item A, R.D. 2015 dash, I guess that's 1-1. Approval of ordinance 2015 dash 1-1, annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation of all tract of lands lying in and being in land lots 684, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia. A total of 0.3 acres, being known as 1900 Watkins Road, Mableton, Georgia. Larry Freeman is the applicant. I know we have to do these separately, vote on them separately. I'm going to go ahead and read all of them now. B is approval of ordinance 2015 dash 12. Annexation request, 100% ownership, requesting annexation of all tract of land lying in beginning in land lot 684, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia. A total of 0.2 acres, being known as 1890 Watkins Road, Mableton. Larry Freeman is the applicant. C is approval of ordinance 2015 dash 13. Annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation of all tract of land lying in and being in land lot 684, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County. A total of 0.2 acres, being known as 1880 Watkins Road, Mableton, Georgia. Larry Freeman is the applicant. Mr. Jones, you want to give the backgrounds, as I've read everything?
There's not much background to these, and they're all consistent. We've received a, the letter that's required from Cobb County. They do not oppose any of these annexation requests. And in meeting with community development, these, each of these requests for annexation into the city, the application to complete.
All three of these are in Mr. Ron Fennel's district. Mr. Fennel, if you'll take care of each one of those individually and vote on them, then we'll go on to the next.
Will do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a total of 3/4 of an acre with all three. We'll start with ordinance 2015, 2015 dash 11. That being 1900 Watkins Road represents 0.3 acres. I move approval.
Motion second to approve this. This will become part of Ward?
Seven.
Seven. Effective?
Beg pardon? It'll be effective October 1st.
Okay. All right, got a motion second, in discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. If you'll go to B now, that'd be great.
Item B, ordinance 2015 dash 12. It is an annexation request, 100% of the owners, from Larry Freeman. It is 0.2 acres. It is addressed 1890 Watkins Road, and that is also to be effective October 1st. Move approval. And, of course, it'll be a part of Ward 7, as will the others.
We have a motion. Did we get a second?
Second.
Motion second, in discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. C?
Item C is ordinance 2015 dash 13. Represents 2/10 of an acre. It is addressed 1880 Watkins Road, same applicant, and I move approval, with the understanding it'll be effective October 1 in Ward 7.
Second.
Motion second to approve this annexation, become part of Ward 7. In discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Item D, ordinance 2015 dash 14. Approval of ordinance 2015, 14. Annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation of all tracts of land lying and being in land lot 632, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia. A total of 0.25 acres, being known as 2808 Madison Street, Smyrna, Georgia. Mr. Jones, the background.
This one is consistent with the previous three. The application is in order, and we have received a letter from Cobb County that does not object to the annexation.
This is in, once it becomes annexed, will be in Ms. Melanie Pritchett's district. Is that correct? I'm sorry. Terry Nudlowich, okay? So, Mrs. Nudlowich, on Madison Street. Mrs. Nudlowich.
Yes, at this time, I do move to approve item 4D, which is ordinance 2015 dash 14. Approval of ordinance 2015, 2015 dash 14. Annexation request, this is with 100% of owners requesting annexation of all tract of land lying and being in land lot 632, the 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia. A total of 0.25 acres, being known as 2808 Madison Street in Smyrna, Georgia. Michael P. Good is the applicant.
Second.
Is Mr. Good here? What a great name. Michael P. Good. Got a motion second to annex this property. In discussion. All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 7-0. Thank you all very much for becoming...
Welcome to Ward 3, Mr. Good.
Item E, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, 2015, 165. It's a public hearing, zoning request, rezoning of R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes on 0.35 acres, land lot 49, 680 Grady Street. Pritchett Builders has asked that this be tabled indefinitely. Ms., I don't think we have any background on this. Mrs. Nudlowich?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I do move to table this item. It is item 4E, 2015 dash 165. This is the, sorry, my thing is off. I need to recalibrate this. It's zoning, zoning request, Z15 dash 009. Rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes. It is 0.35 acres, land lot 489. The address is 2680 Grady Street. The applicant is Pritchett Builders Incorporated, and the applicant has requested that the zoning be tabled indefinitely.
Second.
Got a motion second to table this indefinitely. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Just to make, clear up things that indefinitely, Rusty, do you have any idea when this might come back up? Because I know some folks have been here in the past. This is twice now that we've...
He is in active negotiation to purchase property next to the subject property, so there's no timeline when that negotiation will be complete. So we just ask that it be tabled indefinitely, and when they want to come back, we'll repost the property and re-advertise according to state law.
Good deal. Thank you. Item F, 2015, 166. A public hearing, zoning request, Z1508. Rezoning R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family homes, 1.27-acre land lot 488, 1091, 1107, and 1121 Bank Street, Pritchett Brothers. The applicant has requested this be tabled till the 21st of September. Ms. Terry Anulowich?
Yes, that's correct. They have requested this to be tabled till the 21st of September. They have a new hydrology report, and they are discussing some aspects of this report with the neighbors in the immediate vicinity. So at this time, I would like to move to table item 4F, which is 2015 dash 166. This was, was the public hearing for a zoning request, Z15 dash 008. Rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family homes. It's a 1.27-acre tract, land lots 488 through 1091. The address is 1107 and 1121 Bank Street. Applicant is Pritchett Brothers Incorporated, and the applicant has requested that the zoning request be tabled to the council meeting on September 21st, 2015.
Motion second to table till September 21st. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item G on the agenda is public, 2015, 168. Public hearing, zoning request, Z15 dash 007. Rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for the development of 15 single-family homes, 5.61 acres, land lot 338, 3744 Plumcrest Road, Venture Homes. The applicant is here somewhere. Okay, I'm going to ask that Mr. Jones read the background.
Mr. Bayer, the Venture Homes request the rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for 15 single-family homes, the density of 2.67 units per acre. The zoning request was originally tabled at the May 2011 Planning and Zoning Meeting to the June, to the June 8, 2015 meeting at the request of the applicant. The rezoning request was then heard by the P&amp;Z Board on June 8, 2015. It was recommended for denial, and I believe that denied 4 to 3. There were revisions to the plan made. It was brought back before the P&amp;Z Board on July 13, and it was then approved 5 to 2. There were some changes to the acreage. It was reduced from 6 acres for 16 lots to 15 homes on 5.61 acres. It was heard by mayor and council on August 17, and it was tabled until this day.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? For those that, and here's what I'd like to do. I want to give everybody the opportunity to speak, but we have to have you sworn in. So even if you just think you want to speak, and then you end up, you don't want to speak, I'd rather get everybody sworn in all at the same time. So those that want to speak, please step forward to be sworn in at this time. Just stand up. We can bring them up. There's not as many as I thought there would be here. Okay, if, is that everybody? Before we begin this, it's going to take 10 minutes. Everybody sit back down. Before we begin this hearing, I just want to just, I'm not trying to skew your lecture. For some folks, the issue of zoning property is very emotional. I just want everybody to know that you're going to get an opportunity to speak, whether you're for the rezoning or whether you're against it. You're going to get your five minutes if you want that many. I'll be here till 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning, because that's the way it ought to be. That's your right as a citizen. Some of you probably have never spoken before in public, and that's okay. But I will tell you this, after a couple of people have hit on the same issue over and over and over again, we get it. But I'm looking forward personally to hear what everyone has to say about this piece of property. So just remain calm. Just say what you want to say. This is not a, we don't make decisions based on how many people are for something or how many people are against something. We have to take it without fear or favor and act as we believe is in the best interest of our city. So I just want to say that. Did you get the, you got the background?
Yes.
This is in Mr. Ron Fennel's district, and I'm sure he's going to turn it over to staff for staff's presentation. Is that correct?
Mr. Sudewith regretted, but he has a long-planned family trip. He's out of town, and his able number two, Mr. Rusty Martin, is capable of, since he's been intimately involved in this project from the outset. Mr. Martin, you want to describe the project?
Sure. I think Mr. Jones has adequately described the history and how we got to this point, so I'll move forward with the, with the request and explaining that. This property is located just off North Cooper Lake Road and at the end, dead end of Plumcrest. It's approximately 5.6 acres. It's located in Ward 7. Currently, there's two existing single-family residences. The applicant is proposing 15 new homes off a new public road off of North Cooper Lake Road. The existing zoning for the property is R20. The applicant is proposing RAD conditional, which is a site plan-specific zoning with The future land use map reflects this area as suburban residential. That means it allows a single-family residential development up to three units per acre. They are not proposing to change that land use classification. They're proposing a development with a density of 2.67 units per acre. As you can see, everything to the north, south, east, and west is all suburban residential as well. I've added a vicinity map of the area, just to highlight some of the other RAD zoning classifications that are in the area, just to show what's going on. There's some other RAD zoning that is located along Concord Road that I didn't call out specifically. But this area is a mixture of zoning classifications. There's RAD, there's R15, there's R20, there's R12, and there's some townhouse zoning up at Atkins Way in North Cooper Lake, as well as some, some commercial uses. Just to give you guys some perspective, the existing development is 15 lots at 2.67 units per acre. In comparison to Austin Lakes, that's 96 lots at 2.19 units per acre. Westbrook Park, which is further down, North Cooper Lake, is 30 lots at 2.74 units per acre. And the park at North Cooper Lake is 12 lots at 2.74 units per acre. And North Cooper Lake Place is 20 at 2.96 units per acre. So the density proposed is, is in line with other infill developments in the area. With respect to the proposed zoning versus the R20 zoning classification, obviously, they're seeking a reduction in the minimum lot size from 20,000 square feet down to nine. However, the average lot size for this development is approximately 11,000 square feet. They're seeking a reduction in the minimum lot width at the setback line from 100 feet down to 55 feet. And a reduction in the minimum front setback from 35 feet to 30. They are also looking to reduce the minimum side setback from 12 feet to 5, and the rear from 35 to 30. Both zoning districts allow for, have a maximum height limitation of 35 feet. So in our 20 zoning designation, you can have a 35-foot tall structure, as well as in the RAD zoning classification. The maximum lot coverage for the lots in R20 is 35%, and the maximum lot coverage for the proposed development under RAD is 45%. 45% is the standard for RAD. They're not asking to vary from what RAD currently allows. The minimum square footage for the R20 zoning district is 2,100 square feet, and the proposed development is in line with RAD classification of 1,800 square feet. The proposed homes that this developer is proposing are well in excess of 2,100 square feet. This is just the minimum that is established by code. Here's another comparison of the zoning standards, infill developments in the area. I sort of went through and compared Austin Lake, the rest of the RAD subdivisions along North Cooper Lake, and provided the minimum lot size, average lot size, minimum lot width, minimum front setback, side setback, and rear setback. And each of these cases, the proposed subdivision is, exceeds some, some of these infill developments with respect to setback and lot size and lot width. This is the proposed site plan. As I stated before, there will be a new public road that accesses the site from North Cooper Lake Road. They'll head west into the property. There'll be a cul-de-sac, and then they'll come back out to North Cooper Lake. The houses are all fronting on this new public roadway. The proposed stormwater detention facility is located at the south end of the property, near the intersect, or near the dead end of Plumcrest. In addition to this facility, the developer will be required to pipe the outfall from this detention facility down the east side of Plumcrest in a new stormwater pipe that they will be constructing from the site all the way to Highview to connect to the city system. So the water that leaves this detention facility will be going into a pipe and will not be sheet-flowing down the street. The applicant is proposing 6,375 square feet of open space for this development, which will include a 14-by-16-foot pavilion. I think there will be an outdoor fireplace included in that. He can clarify that. In addition to a mail kiosk. The mail kiosk is a requirement of the postal service. They don't do individual mailboxes anymore, so that's the direction that they're headed. In addition, the applicant has proposed a 10-foot tree preservation easement around the perimeter of the property. On their tree plan, they show actually a limit of disturbance about 25 feet off the property line, so they may be, they may be preserving more trees than the 10-foot tree preservation easement. These are the proposed home elevations. They're all pretty standard. They're all pretty standard with regards to what you see in Smyrna currently. There's pictures of the subject site, pictures of adjacent properties. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R-20 to RAD conditional for the 15 single-family residences at a density of 2.67 units per acre with the following conditions. I won't read the standard conditions, but I'll just highlight them, and then I'll read the special conditions. Number one, the composition of the homes in the subdivision shall include a mixture of items, including but not limited to bricks, stones, shake, hardy plank, and stucco. Number two, the developer should provide a vegetated buffer with a minimum width 20 feet, parallel to any right-of-way external to the development that shall ply along North Cooper Lake Road. Number three, there shall be protective covenants with a mandatory HOA on all lots. Number four, the developer shall provide at least 200 square feet of common space per lot. Number five, the detention retention pond shall be placed and screened appropriately to be unobtrusive to homes inside and outside the development. The stormwater detention plan shall be designed to create at least a 10% reduction in a two-year to 100-year storm event. Number six, all utilities within the development shall be underground. Number seven, the developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number eight, a strip of brick pavers or stamped concrete shall be installed at the street entrance, on the street at the subdivision entrance for a minimum distance of 20 feet. Number nine, the development of any streets shall conform to city standards. Number 10, no debris may be buried on any lot or common area. Number 11, the developer will install decorative streetlights within the development. Number 12, the developer will comply with the city's tree ordinance. Number 13, all landscape plans must be prepared by a registered landscape architect. Number 14, all yards and common areas are to be sodded and landscaped as appropriate. 15 is a tree planting schedule, which requires a minimum 12 inches of tree to be planted on each lot. Special condition 16, the development shall maintain the following minimum setbacks: a front setback of 30 feet, interior side of 5 feet, exterior side along lots 1 and 15 at 25 feet, and a rear of 30. Number 17, the developer shall be, the development shall be developed with a minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet. Number 18, the proposed homes shall have a minimum floor area of 2,100 square feet. Number 19, the 15 new homes shall be accessed from the new proposed public road. Number 20, the developer shall provide a 5-foot sidewalk with a 2-foot grass buffer inside and outside the subdivision. 21, the driveway shall have a minimum length of 22 feet from building face to back edge of sidewalk. Each unit shall have a two-car garage with a decorative garage door. Number 22, the developer shall be responsible for any water or sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. 23, the developer shall be responsible for any stormwater improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. 24, no stormwater management facility or portion thereof shall be located on any portion of the proposed lots. The stormwater management facilities shall be solely located on the HOA property. 25, the developer shall provide a 10-foot landscape buffer along the perimeter of the property in accordance with the city's tree ordinance in Section 503 of the zoning ordinance. 26, all trees within the limits of disturbance and not located within a tree protection area must be removed during the land clearing and grading phase of the development. Number 27, approval of the subject property for the RAD zoning district shall be conditioned upon the development of the property in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan dated 7/6/2015. And finally, 28, the applicant shall be bound to the elevation submitted and dated 5/4/2015. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Rusty, when you say that the HOA maintains the detention-retention pond, how do we assure that that really happens 10, 15, 20 years from now?
Well, first of all, prior to completing construction on the detention facility, we require the developer to record an inspection-maintenance agreement and record that with Cobb County as part of the HOA documents. So they've established an inspection-maintenance agreement. We've reviewed it. We said, okay, for this facility, this is appropriate. They record that with the HOA documents, and then they have to maintain it throughout the life of the development. And we'll periodically follow up with spot inspections to make sure that the site hasn't grown up, or it's not functioning properly, or anything else like that.
If they built the project out as it currently is now, would they be required to have a detention?
I believe so. That'd be a better question for Mr. Eric Randall, but yes, because they exceed impervious surface area, they'd be required to meet those standards as well.
Any questions with Rusty? Okay, Rusty, you can just have a seat on the front row. Now we can hear from the applicant, and then we will hear from those folks that were sworn into, and I know exactly who was sworn in. Don't try to sneak up on me. The applicant will come forward and tell us who you are.
Mayor and council, good evening. My name is Sean Randall. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Venture Homes and applicant for this community. And I suspect by the turnout, I may be probably less popular even than your new finance director sending out property tax bills, but we may let the crowd vote on that.
I'd say you way ahead of her.
But we really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I think we've come a long way with this plan, and we're proud of the plan we're submitting to the city. So Rusty, how do I turn this? Oh, it's already on. Good. I suspect there will be a very spirited discussion tonight, and I want to make sure that I make a few points appropriate to the zoning. You're going to hear a lot tonight about density versus high density. And I want to be the first to go on the record to say RAD, as defined by this city, is not high density. You're going to hear a lot tonight about screening, lot size, McMansions overpowering their neighbors. There may be even some discussion about how close the houses are together such that three-legged squirrels can't jump between the rooftops. You're going to hear about planned pavilions, and that maybe they shouldn't be built by the city or built by the developer, even though we don't have to build it, we're building it as an amenity, because you can't park a car underneath the pavilion. Well, I don't want to park a car. I want to park a couple of picnic tables, so that my homeowners have a place to go if they want to have a picnic together with some of their neighbors. You're going to hear that R-20 is the panacea. If only this developer would develop R-20, all our problems would be gone. Well, I'll talk a lot about R-20 tonight. R-20 would be 12 units, maybe 11 at the worst case, but 12. We can probably squeeze 12 R-20 units on there, because what I've learned is R-20 isn't always necessarily R-20. We're going to hear a lot about traffic tonight, and that how these 15 lots are going to clog up North Cooper Lake Road. Traffic is a problem in this whole city, not just North Cooper Lake Road. I acknowledge that. Most instances, I'm the chief builder of D cell lanes for right-hand turns into communities, probably in Cobb County. We're going to hear tonight the schools are overcrowded, that my 15 homes, which have two cars each, generate 30 cars a day increase, were also going to clog up the schools. It's three more than the R-12 would allow. Let's look at some RAD zoning. This is North Cooper Lake Place, density 2.96, recently zoned RAD. Westbrook Park, density 2.74, recently zoned RAD. Both these projects located off North Cooper Lake Road. The park at North Cooper Lake, density 2.74, recently zoned RAD. Austin Lake, 2.19, zoned in the 90s, RAD, with significantly more 9,000-square-foot lots than we have, significantly more. How did we get here? How did this thing end up being so contentious, and why? Well, we submitted a plan back in May, early June, and here's the plan. Here's the original plan. And we had a public meeting. We were denied by the Planning Commission, 4 to 3, because of this plan. And in retrospect, rightly so. We had two houses fronting, because the seller said, look, I need to sell all my property. The only way we can make this make sense is two houses to front into Bennett Woods. We heard loud and clear from the homeowners at Bennett Woods that night, we don't want those houses. We want one R-20 lot. There's an existing R-20 lot, that's what we want. We took it out. We took it out of the plan. We heard loud and clear about the fact that we've got a stormwater problem in Bennett Woods. We heard loud and clear about the developer down the road who recently screwed up some sort of stormwater and flooded this lady and her family. I'm terribly sorry about that, but I had nothing to do with that. So I quickly keyed on, stormwater is a big issue. For the first time in my 25 years in doing this business, I paid for a hydrology study before I even had the zoning. I know we can solve the stormwater problems, and we have solved the stormwater problems, I think, in the subdivision, if the engineer's right, but the city's going to verify that, and we're going to have to make it right. So we resolved that. We decided we're going to have to build an 18-inch pipe all 1,000 feet down Plumcrest Road. We could take it right down the right-of-way. By law, we have the right to get in the right-of-way. That would mean we'd cut through nine driveways, we'd take down multiple mailboxes, we'd relocate all sorts of power lines, we'd go by Bill and Judy Cone's 110-year-old red oak tree that I've had an arborist come out and inspect. And we determined at that point, you know what? It's not worth it. We don't want to put our neighbors through that kind of grief. We'll take the road at a more expensive option. We'll take it right, or take the road, take the 18-inch sewer line right down the center of the road. We're going to reduce the peak flows on this property anywhere from 40 to 50%, and that's conservative. That's real. Now, when you develop impervious surfaces, as this council well knows, you are going to increase the overall runoff, but we're going to store it and release it appropriately as the engineers tell us to do. This should, will it be a panacea? No, it's not going to solve all the problems at Bennett Woods, but we are not going to add to those problems. So where are we now? Stormwater reduced by as much as 60%? Unlike all these other guys that just got their zoning, I've said, I heard, after the 4 or 3 vote at Planning Commission, we had a town hall meeting. I heard loud and clear, screening, McMansions towering over our properties. So I said, I'm going to put a 10-foot tree preservation easement around the entire property. Don't have to do that, not required by zoning. I also said, where I can, I'm going to pull my clearing limits out at least 25 feet, unless I've got to do some sort of development work, something associated with the development. But I feel like in looking at this site plan around lots 1 through 11, I can pull out, and I can give everyone a 25-foot, essentially non-deserved buffer by the developer. That doesn't mean that the homeowner can't come back someday and cut a tree down and install a playscape if they want to do that in their backyard. But what they can't do, what that homeowner can't do, is cut down a tree in that 10-foot buffer unless they get approval in writing from the HOA. So whatever trees we plant, whatever gets planted, whatever is there by nature, has to stay there. Here's the tree save plan. I apologize for the eye chart. It really is not. There's a total of, and I put this out to the group at the last town hall meeting. I said, how many specimen trees do you think are on this property? Not by Sean Randall's definition, by the city's definition, which is very much in keeping with Cobb County, Fulton County, Cherokee County. They have classifications, and I don't know them. I'm not an arborist nor an engineer. But basically, if it's over 10 inches and it's an oak tree, that's a specimen tree. Whatever the parameters are by the city. I've paid for a landscape architect to go out there and count them. And I got a response back, oh, there must be 100 specimen trees. There are six. Unfortunately, they're all in places where I have to take them down. But all those other trees that you see in that 25-foot buffer aren't coming down, but none of them are specimen trees by the city. In addition, I have to plant 100 caliper inches for every acre I disturb. So I've got to plant 568 inches of trees, along with one-to-one replacement for all of those, all of those specimens, six specimen trees I'm taking down. Plus, I got to plant three trees for every house that goes in the community. The other thing I wanted to talk about was just the McMansion issue towering over the neighbors. So I went on the Cobb County GIS, which, again, it's not a surveyor, but it's pretty close. It's a great website. And I took Pineview Manor to the north, and a couple of interesting things came out of that. If I live in a house in Pineview Manor, I walk out the front door to pick up my Sunday paper. That house across the street on the north side is 140 feet away, plus or minus, 140 feet. When my new homeowners walk out their back door, on all the eight lots that'll front across the seven lots in Pineview Manor, my eight lots across the seven lots, so we're not jamming three to one or anything like that, my eight lots across those seven lots will be 165 feet away, back door to back door. Now, there is, on the second lot in, there's a little outbuilding. I did not take that into consideration, but I did take the rest of it into consideration. And I said, well, gosh, well, how does that compare to Bennett Woods? What's the kind of distance back door to back door that you have in Bennett Woods? As best I can tell, it's about 180 feet, back door to back door, for the homes that front on North Cooper Lake versus the homes that front on Plumcrest. 180 feet. Will be about 165. So I don't think there's going to be a towering, plus, we're going to have a 25-foot buffer softening whatever that two-story structure is. The other thing I wanted to talk about is R-20 is not necessarily R-20. Everybody thinks, oh, it's 20,000 square feet. It's got to be. 14 or 15, I didn't have time to calc it all. There's 20 lots in Pineview Manor. 14 of them are less than 20,000 square feet. The seven that back up to me average less than 18,000 square feet. So lot size being the panacea end-all-be-all isn't necessarily the case. You know, yes, 17,000 is still bigger than 11,000. I get that. But I think at the end of the day, when you drive down my street after my homes are built, and you drive down Pineview Manor, you're not going to be able to tell that density. The difference will be Pineview Manor has a little bit bigger backyard. Their backyard's 100 feet from their back door. My backyard's 65 feet, 61 feet. And that's, you know, that's a layout. I laid out several houses. The person we probably impact the most in this whole development, and a couple of the council people pointed it out to me and said, please go meet with this man. I did. Howard and Sandy Betts and I met. Howard's still opposed. I know he's opposed. He's here tonight. He may very well speak. But I told Howard, I said, look, my house is going to be, my house 55 to 60 feet from the corner of your house. But I will plant evergreens according to the arborist, 10-foot on center, according to the city arborist specifications, evergreen 68 feet tall. Every 10-foot on center, I'm going to plant 27 trees along the common property line. Actually, only 24. I've extended the screening another 30 feet, because Sandy really felt like she could still see stuff as she drives up the driveway, so I've actually extended it another 30 feet. We have sat down, we have met with everyone who will meet with me, every chance we've gotten. I've offered to meet. The only meeting I have turned down was a meeting requested of me on September 2nd, which was the same night I committed to Councilman Welch and Councilman Fennell that I would meet with them. Let's see. I want to kind of summarize this section, and then just get off of density, get off of... of space between, oh, the other, let me back up one. Average space of three lots, or three homes up there backing up to the Pineview Manor, average distance between those houses is about 17 feet, 15 to 17 feet. So the three-legged squirrel will have a little bit longer jump. Venture Homes is not a flipper. We don't flip land. We buy and we build. We're going to contribute, if this project is approved and we go forward, we're going to contribute, excuse me, over $800,000 worth of state-of-the-art infrastructure, roads, sanitary sewer, storm drain, water lines, et cetera, et cetera, to the city. We're going to add $7 to $8 million worth of new homes to the property tax rolls. This site plan is significantly better than our original. RAD is not high-density. This project is in compliance. We average 2.67. The average of those four RAD projects is 2.66, including the Austin Lakes. We have tried to work with the folks. I've met onsite. I've paid for an arborist to go out and talk to Bill and Judy Cone. I've met onsite with Howard and Sandy Betts. Venture Homes, we just want to be a good neighbor. We have a project in Smyrna. We just got our building permit. First building, six units. We paid the city nearly $30,000 just to start the building, just for the building permit, sewer tap and water meter. In 90 days, we'll have $3.5 million plus invested in this project. And the other thing I wanted to tell everyone in this room, see all those trees in the background? Susan, those are trees left in your district by this developer. What we should be focused on is what's going to be built? What are these guys doing? We've hired the best architect that I know of in Cobb County to hire, Roger Caldwell, Caldwell Klein. These are some of the elevations he's designed for us. He's done numerous projects here in the city. Again, I'll just conclude, I know a lot of people want to talk and they deserve to be heard. RAD, when properly applied, is not bad. This project will have a substantial, we think, positive impact on this city. But at the end of the day, we have to remain competitive. We have to be able to compete with the folks that got their zoning, you know, two years ago. Venture Homes would respectfully ask that you approve this project. You don't have to. It's well within your prerogative purview to turn this down. But I'm compelled to remind you that if you do, then you're, de facto saying that the future land use plan is flawed, that this area should not be zoned low-density residential, it should be zoned something even lower than that, that you shouldn't be able to build three units per acre, we're not even asking. If we're asking for three units, it'd be 17, 18 units, or 18 units in the project. So you've got to say, "The future land use plan for this area is fundamentally flawed. Our city staff," this is what you'll also have to say, "the paid professionals whose sole mission is to serve the best interests of this city are wrong." Because this project has probably been the most vetted project I've ever been associated with. I've been doing this for 25 years. I, you know, it went through the wringer not once but twice, because we made all the changes. So this thing's been vetted twice by the city staff, approved both times. You're also going to have to say, "Our planning commission is wrong." Yes, they voted it down, probably should have the first plan. But we've made substantial changes to that plan. We've taken out the homes in Bennett Woods. We've added an entire buffer around this project. We've solved, you know, what seemed to be an unsolvable water issue and several other things. So you're going to have to say, "The planning commission, which voted four-three against first time, embraced it five-two the second time, was wrong." And I think finally, you're going to have to say, "This council is wrong." The three projects, not in the same ward, not in the same general area, but on the same street, not once, not twice, but three times, was approved by this council. Same density, same type of zoning, same type of conditions. All I'm asking for is a fair shot in a level playing field. The problem is, I have to compete economically with these folks. They've got that density, wrong or right, but I think it's right. They've got that density. For me to compete, I can't retro back to R20. Now, if you want me to do R20 at 16,000, you know, but again, I, there is RAD for a reason. RAD gave you all those stipulations that I have to comply with. So, again, I thank you very much. I ask for your support, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Randall, when they turned you down four to three, how many houses were you planning on building at that time?
The original plan had 16 houses.
I know, but how many was that? Was it 15?
No, no, it was 16. The original planning, the original plan turned down by the Planning Commission had 16 homes.
Okay, so this revised plan is actually, you lost one house, is that correct?
Yes, but it also carved out, in fairness, it did carve out a piece of the property, if I can.
Okay, and as I understand it, you are going to put Cleveland Cypress or something behind some of those houses to, or do some kind of landscaping to kind of soften the effect?
Yes, ma'am. We, of course, and I, you know, I offered to meet with Mr. Dunn on this as well. He declined to meet. But we will certainly line both sides of the entrance with very heavy screening and that will be irrigated. Now, the 10-foot easement, tree preservation easement wrapping the whole property, it's just not economical to pay for irrigation on all that.
I just wanted to make sure I understood you correctly, you know?
But we will plant where appropriate. No, what I did commit to was on the western property line with Mr. Betts to do an evergreen every 10 feet on center for 270 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Okay, if you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We had a number of folks that signed up or swore in, and we don't have any pecking order, so those that want to go, the, whenever you're ready, we have a gauge up here. You don't even need five minutes. Just give this man a minute right here. You get five minutes to speak. You don't have to speak. You can, if you go over a little bit, I'm pretty lenient on letting folks speak. So the clock is running on you. If you'll tell us who you are and where you live and any comments that you'd like to make.
Jimmy Smith, live at 908 Carriage Path in Smyrna. I'm presenting, representing the owner of at 421 Havillon Way, which is only five houses away from this development. I'm here tonight not just as a concerned resident, but as a retired councilman, served with some of y'all here tonight still. I know this is not what it's like being in your chairs tonight. I've been there. Throughout this process, I have heard a lot about land rights of the owner of this property, but no one has discussed the land rights of the surrounding owners. These Smyrna citizens have invested years of time and money, not just in their homes, but in this city. Sure, these homes will be new, bigger, and maybe more expensive, but they will destroy the continuity of the existing R20 neighborhoods. While I was on council, we voted down a request like this in Forest Hills on Dunn Street. A developer wanted to buy three home sites, then build a cluster of homes on a cul-de-sac. The council decided then that it would not fit in with the existing surrounding homes. Don't destroy the environment that makes neighborhoods like Bennett Woods, Pineview Manor, Forest Hills, Chaney Woods, Deer Woods, the attraction that draws people to Smyrna. If any of you have driven out Church Road recently, and he just showed you a picture of his development on Church Road, this developer has a project there where an area that was once fully wooded has been slab graded for 49 townhomes. North Cooper Lake site will look much like the same with just little larger units, slightly separated. If this request is approved, it could set a precedent that would allow others to purchase multiple lots in any given R20 neighborhood. Remove the homes and build cluster homes of a higher density. Then you can refer to these neighborhoods as Bennett slabs, slab estates, slab hills, Chaney slabs, and deer slab. I'm sure that the density on this site is driven by land value. Like anything else, it's only worth what someone's willing to pay for it. I have no idea what the developer has offered this owner for this property, but will the value still be the same if this zoning request is denied? I understand this developer is in business to make a profit. I do not fault him for that. But it's not the government's responsibility to approve high-density development to meet its profit margin. RAD request gives advantage over any developer trying to build R20 zoning. This proposal is set at 3.9 units per acre, not the 2.6. Let me tell you how I come up with that. If you figure, taking out his proposal, the roads, the green space, and the retention pond, if this were an R20 development, each lot, and Rusty just showed us, each lot of the R20 development has to start to be a minimum of 20,000 square feet. They would add in the roads and the retention pond. Green space would not be needed, because it would come with each lot. RAD may not be bad if built in the right location. This is not that location. RAD can work adjacent to some commercial sites like Belmont and John Paul, or where existing buildings are in deplorable condition, such as Hickory Lake Apartments. I stood in this chamber 12 years ago to announce my candidacy to run for council on the platform of reducing high-density cluster zoning. But after being elected, the economy did that for me. For a while, we could not find a developer to look at Smyrna, and if one came forward, it was usually a RAD development. Some I supported, others I did not. But that was a change, but that has changed now with the Braves being at our front door. We no longer have to accept every request as a RAD development. This request is also based off Smyrna Land Use Map. That map is just a guideline to go by, by what could be built, not what is approved to be built. It has no legal binding on zoning. It just, just because it gives areas where something could be built, nothing is stated that it has to be. Our city staff, Rusty does an excellent job of using the guidebook given to him by this council to process all application for development, and they recommended approval based on that book. But it still is just a recommendation and not a legal approval. It is time to rewrite that book for which they follow and save our established neighborhoods. Thank you.
Man, you're getting applause before you even speak.
I know it. Good evening, council members and Mayor Bacon. My name is Kelly Johnson, and I live at 622 Austin Drive at the corner of North Cooper Lake with my spouse, Melinda Hill, and I've been in my home since 2005. I'm here on behalf of our interests and as an attorney for many of the neighbors opposing this rezoning application. I'd like to thank you all for all of the time and attention you've given this matter over the last few months. I know that you've received, read, and responded to countless numbers of letters and emails. You've very graciously taken calls from concerned neighbors, and you've come out to the property at issue to observe it firsthand. You've held meetings with the developer to discuss his plans with us. We appreciate your commitment to your constituency and to Smyrna. I'd like to begin by discussing the legalities of this issue and what you can expect to hear tonight from the concerned citizens speaking. As you are all aware, the comprehensive plan, as discussed tonight, is a policy document that sets forth our community's goals for its future development. The applicant and the city planner have told you that this development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, but actually it is not. The comprehensive plan lists Smyrna's goals and policies for housing, which include: protect and preserve established residential neighborhoods; ensure adequate buffering and screening in order to protect residential neighborhoods from negative impacts of adjacent development; and ensure that infill housing development is compatible with surrounding established neighborhoods. The property at issue is actually an entirely different infill definition in the comprehensive plan from all of the other subdivisions that Mr. Martin cited tonight, as well as Mr. Randall. This definition is "the subdivision of vacant land and/or demolition of existing structures in established communities that require the installation of new streets to access the buildable lots." Even Smyrna's website emphasizes its commitment to infill development, stating, "Within many of our well-built and well-loved neighborhoods are new infill residential additions. If you want new construction, you will find pleasing options matching the style and/or spirit of the existing neighborhoods." The proposed development is not compatible with the current surrounding established neighborhoods. It does not match the style or the spirit of the existing neighborhoods. You will hear much more about this issue tonight. It is an important one. Changing the zoning from R20 to RAD conditional in an infill property of this nature, surrounded by homes in an R20 community, is a significant hammer blow to this community. We are very aware that the council and mayor are relying on the nine zoning standards in Section 1508 of Smyrna's zoning ordinance when it considers a rezoning request. Six of these rezoning standards are required for consideration under Georgia state law as well. Thus far, I've heard no mention of any of these standards by the applicant tonight at the planning and zoning hearings or in either of the town hall meetings held to discuss the plans for redevelopment. The application for rezoning all but ignores these standards, answering each issue by repeating the standard. No facts, no analysis. What you will hear tonight from the concerned citizens is factual evidence and reasoned analysis based on these standards in opposition to the zoning application. Perhaps we've heard nothing from the applicant about these zoning review standards, because a true analysis of these standards will demonstrate to the council and the mayor that this rezoning application should be denied. The zoning application fails zoning standard two. The zoning proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. You'll hear very compelling evidence and analysis of this issue from Mr. Wensel, Mr. Dunn, and Mr. Betts. The zoning application fails zoning standard three. It is obvious that the property has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. You will hear evidence and analysis of this issue tonight by Mr. Crooks and Ms. Bendov. The zoning application fails zoning standard four. The proposed higher-density development will cause excessive burden on existing streets, utilities, and schools. You'll hear several people present evidence and analysis on this standard, including Ms. Rett, Ms. Picard, Mr. Hewitt, Ms. Hill, and Ms. Suddeth. The zoning application fails zoning standard five. As I've already stated, the zoning proposal is not in conformity with the policy and intent of the land use plan. And you'll hear evidence and analysis on this issue from Mr. Wilson, Ms. Lamb, Ms. Williams, and Mr. Callaway. The zoning application fails zoning standard six. There are not other existing or changing conditions that warrant this rezoning. Expect to hear evidence and analysis of this issue from Mr. Betts. The zoning application fails zoning standard seven. Expect to hear evidence and analysis from Ms. Bendov, Ms. Lamb, and Ms. Clapper. The zoning application fails zoning standard eight. You will hear evidence and analysis about this from Ms. Nelson, Mr. Wensel, and Ms. Clapper. Finally, the zoning application fails zoning standard nine, and you will hear evidence and analysis about this issue from Mr. Wensel, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Crooks, Ms. Williams, Ms. Clapper, Ms. Suddeth, Mr. Hewitt, and Ms. Goodman. We strongly urge you to consider the overwhelming evidence that we will present under the law tonight and deny the rezoning application before you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. That's going to be a hard act to follow. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Alan Wensel. I live on Manson Avenue, 4040 Manson Avenue, and I am truly a product of Smyrna. 1958, my parents purchased a house on Spring Road. May of 58, they moved in. I was born in February of 1959. You do the math. I am truly...
Hold on, let's see the month.
Nine months.
You're 11 years older than I am. No, younger than I am.
Yes. I think you do have more hair than me, young Mr. Mayor.
Like the end of the meeting.
I am a Smyrna native. Growing up, His Honor the Mayor was our postal carrier, although back then, I believe we referred to him as "the mailman."
The mailman.
That's been a few years ago, hasn't it, officer? And I'm speaking tonight about the drainage. And this issue is, Ms. Johnson has said is relevant to the factors two, which is adversely affecting the existing usability of adjacent property, eight, creating a nuisance, and nine, the proposed use will affect adjoining properties in a negative fashion. Now, I'm going to confess right off the bat, there's an engineering solution to all this, and they've got it. They're building a detention pond. It's huge. And they have to build a huge detention pond. That's about the only thing you can do. And the reason they have to do this is because of the amount of impervious surface that's being introduced in this area. Right now, in this proposed development, there are two homes. There's a little shed here and there, something like that. There's a little shed here and there, something like that, a couple of driveways. We're going to 15 homes. This vastly changes the amount of water that's going to run off. Now, how vast? Pretty vast. I'll give you an example here in just a second. Going through the hydrology report submitted by the developer, the volume for the 10-year storm, and I'm not going to get into the hydrology stuff. The city engineer and I, we can have a wonderful conversation about CFS and all this other stuff, and I am not going to bore y'all to death with that. But it's going to increase the amount that's generated by over three and a half times for the 10-year storm event. Now, what's a 10-year storm event? That means there's a 10% chance it's going to occur this year, or next year, or the following year, any year, there's a 10% chance this is going to occur. Why is this being increased so much? I'm trying to keep track of the time here.
Good, you're good, don't worry.
Okay. Because of all the impervious surface. Now, you could cut back on this impervious surface by increasing the amount of green space. If it remained at R-20, each lot has a whole bunch of green space built into it, and that helps with the runoff. In this development, there's minimal amounts available. Now, the applicant will say, "Well, this plan is better than what he started out with." When he started out with the initial plan that was voted down by planning and zoning, there were roughly 46,000 square feet of green space. Now, we're at 6,000, an 85% reduction. Planning and zoning requires him to have 200 square feet per home, 3,000. He's generously giving us 6,000, which is quite a reduction from the initial. And to put this in perspective, the green space, 200 square feet, is roughly the size of a parking space out here in the parking lot. 6,000 would be 30 parking spaces. That's what he's providing. So you can visualize in your mind how much green space that is. The volume in the 10-year storm that's going to be generating, and this is going to have to be stored, and we're not going with the big storms, we're going with the 10-year storm, 34,000 cubic feet. Well, how much is that? Picture a gasoline transport, one of these big tractor-trailer rigs on the road. That holds 9,200 gallons. That's about 1,200 cubic feet. For the 10-year storm, it would take 28 of those to store that amount of water. The detention pond, it'll be discussed by others. It's a necessary evil. It's required. It helps. It hurts. Before I did the midlife career change to engineering, I worked in commercial insurance. Detention ponds were referred to as an attractive nuisance. The drainage pipe going down Plumcrest, $72 a linear foot, plus all the utility relocations and reconnections, that's going to be well over $100,000, and it's going to inconvenience every resident. It's not a good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and attention, council members and Mr. Bacon. I am Mary Ellen Nelson, and I live at 3777 Plumcrest Road. That's in Bennettwood subdivision, and specifically, I am three homes from the proposed detention pond. Now, the reason I care about this is that along Plumcrest, my family has four generations of people living along Plumcrest, from my 92-year-old mother to my nine-year-old granddaughter who lives at the other end of Plumcrest. Now, because I am discussing the proposed detention pond and the failure of the applicant to meet zoning standard number eight, which states that the use proposed may create a nuisance and is incompatible with the existing uses in the area. Throughout this process, I have asked repeated questions about the pond and tried to gather information. It has not been easy. I have gone to every single town hall meeting. I have sent an email to Mr. Randall, and his reply to me was, "The detention pond can't really be totally delineated because we don't design it until after you folks approve his development." So we're expected to live on something that we don't really understand exactly what we're going to be looking at. So because of this, I decided I would be proactive, and I would go through Smyrna and look at some detention ponds. And excuse me. What I found was, is that we've been told that our particular detention pond is going to be 10,000 square feet. This is ironically larger than six of his proposed lots, which include house and everything, larger than six of the lots. Okay, tonight, the first time I've seen those little blue lines that show us where the detention pond is supposed to be. Up till now, all we've had is in the general area on the plat map of the proposed development, all we have had is 10,000 plus or minus. What does that mean? Okay, well, what our pond is supposedly going to look like is going to have a dirt berm and be eight feet deep, eight feet deep. I'm not much over five feet tall. That's three feet taller than me. Okay, on 10,000 square feet, if there's water coming in at some point in time, even though it's designed as a detention pond to slow the runoff, at some point in time, there's going to be three feet, four feet of water, maybe even more. And if that happens, I have a four-year-old granddaughter that can run faster than I can, and she can get anywhere faster than I can. Unfortunately, when I studied stuff on the internet to find out about detention ponds, I found that there have been unfortunate accidents, and I have found out that according to what we've been told so far, we don't know any idea if there'll be a fence around it, supposedly not. How do you keep children out of water? You don't. If you have kids, you understand that a pond is a magnet. So we need to have this proposed detention pond explained better to the residents who are living around it. The other thing I found out, according to the EPA, there's a very high cost of maintenance to this, and there were some issues in Alpharetta, I think in 2010, that had to do with the HOAs were unaware, and the property owners were unaware that they were responsible for fixing the detention pond when it caused problems to, or before it caused problems to neighbors. And so there wasn't any... Mr. Bacon, I forgot. I wanted to thank you. You let me know about the maintenance agreement filed with Cobb County. First thing I've heard about it tonight is that there's a periodic inspection of a detention pond by the city of Smyrna. The other thing I'm concerned about is if water is detained in a pond, and it is allowed several days, two or perhaps a little more, to dissipate down the drainage system, that there will still be some water in that pond, whether it's in a swale or grass, and that causes more mosquitoes. The CDC tells us to dump out all of our pot bottoms to minimize mosquito growth, to protect our people from West Nile and St. Louis and Sepulites, and so how do you turn up a detention pond? Anyway, I respectfully...
You're good. Go ahead.
What?
You keep going.
Okay.
Not too much longer, but you can...
That's okay. Based on the applicant's failure to satisfy zoning review standard number eight, I respectfully request you deny the applicant's rezoning application, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and attention, council members and Mayor Bacon. My name is Alan Dunn, and my wife, Phyllis, and I live at 3726 North Cooper Lake Road, and we've lived in this area for 28 years. We raised our boys here. We've had a real commitment to Smyrna. We don't want to leave it, and especially my wife. And the planned road for this subdivision is going to be running next door to my house. My bedroom window will be approximately 20 feet from the road. I don't object to development of this property behind my home. We've always expected that. But we've also expected the property developed like all the lots around us. As we all are aware by now, the homes surrounding the property in question are all zoned R-20. I've been very involved with my neighbors and have spent considerable time speaking to them about the proposed infill development. I'm here to represent the adjacent homeowners. The concerns, this is the deed to my property, and it's R-20. It's dated 1988. That's when I moved in. And it clearly says I've got 20,000 square feet, and I'm also, it shows that I'm lot number six of Pineview Manor subdivision. The road will be lot five, and the next lot over, lot four, is an R-20, 20,000-square-foot lot that belongs to Jackie Crittington. And then if you go on all the way around the full circle, you'll find houses that are R-20, a complete circle around this property. The big concern I have, as far as, that we have as a group, is the size of the lots and the size and type of homes. This is a drawing, and I'm sure that Rusty can provide larger drawings, but mentioned tonight, I went through, they mentioned less than 10,000-square-foot lots. Here, the ones, the blue dots, there's 15 houses, and nine of the houses will be built on lots less than half the size, less than 10,000 square feet, which would put two houses on the lot the size of mine. Hopefully, I'll make that clear. As far as, a few things have been said tonight. One, it was mentioned that I declined to meet with Mr. Randall, and my memory is bad, but to my knowledge, I was never invited to a meeting, so I wanted that for the record. The other issue is the number of houses that's been mentioned. They say there's 11 or 12 houses that could be built here, R-20, and according to my calculations, and according to some architects that I speak with, eight or nine is the correct number of houses that could be built R-20. As far as the sketches that we've seen tonight, they're very nice sketches, and in the last community town hall meeting, I asked Mr. Randall if, you know, I'm a little concerned. I see sketches, and I want to see pictures. So I asked Mr. Randall, "Can you provide me with five pictures that show the type houses you're talking about building?" And I may not be exact what he said, but he told me he would have to go back 20 years to provide me with a picture of a house like he wants to build here on this land. Now, I'll try to get back on track. Zoning factors one, two, seven, eight, and nine all take into consideration the effect that rezoning may have on adjacent property and the neighborhood. In particular, the proposed rezoning fails to meet zoning factor seven, and that is whether the development of the property under the zoning proposal will conform to be a detriment to or enhance the architectural standards, open space requirements, and aesthetics of the general neighborhood considering the current historical and planned uses in the area. This neighborhood will stand out like an ugly eyesore amongst the neighborhoods of larger lots, older trees, and solid architecture. Now, that excludes my house, it's 50 years old. But as far as Georgia law supports public participation in the zoning and rezoning process, recognizing the property rights of surrounding landowners. In particular, Georgia law considers adjacent property owners and the impairment of their property rights when reviewing a government's rezoning decision. This proposed infill rezoning is not consistent with the neighborhood in which it's being built.
You're good, Alan. Just, you can keep...
Okay.
Take a deep breath.
It impairs the property rights of adjacent homeowners. Considering zoning factors one, two, seven, eight, and nine, all express concern for the property rights of adjacent homeowners, the applicant fails to satisfy Smyrna's zoning ordinance. The applicant certainly fails to meet zoning factor seven. I respectfully request that you deny the applicant's rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, if I put this down here before I break it. Thank y'all for hearing me. I do appreciate it. Hope I don't bore you. Y'all look like y'all are about to doze off up here.
No, I'm wide awake.
My name is Howard Betts. Sandy and I live at 3760 Richland Circle. Sandy lived in the house 10 years prior to our marriage in 1979. In 1992, she and I bought the house from her parents. We've lived there for 23 years. Sandy lived there for a total of somewhere about 33 years. We raised two children there. They went to public schools in Smyrna. I've had a Smyrna address for 57 years, and that makes the math easier, Max. We share a common property line with this proposed development of 241 feet. I'm not a developer. I'm not in real estate business, so I consulted several realtors to find out what this development would do to our property value. All eight that I talked to said this development will definitely lower our property value. In the view of professionals who sell houses for a living, this development will stick out like a sore thumb, and it'll turn away prospective buyers from our property, not just us, but all the adjoining properties. I want to thank those of you that took the time to come out and see for your own eyes what an adverse effect this will have, this development will have on us and our neighbors, both aesthetically and monetarily. I'd like to address with the council how the applicant failed to meet zoning factor six. Where there are other existing and changing conditions, use development of the property which gives supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the zoning proposal, the applicant is not only requesting a reduction of the R-20 zoning to RAD zoning, but they want special conditions placed on the zoning to allow it to reduce minimum lot size, minimum lot width at the setback line, minimum front setback, minimum side setback allowed by Rusty had the information up there that showed what the differences were, but there's a shocking difference in these conditions from R-20 to this proposed RAD. And real quickly, I'll kind of give you a summary of this. The lot size from 20,000 square feet to 9,000 square feet is a 55% reduction. Minimum lot width to setback from 100 feet to 55 feet is a 45% decrease in the lot width. The minimum front setback from 35 to 30 is 15% decrease. Minimum side setback from 12 feet to 5 feet, that's nearly 60% decrease. Maximum square footage, and I saw that was amended, and I don't know, Rusty might could address this. It may have gone back. It went from 21,000 to 18,000, but it may have been amended there. I'm not clear on that. Then the lot coverage from 35% to 45%, that's 28% increase. The zoning factor six directly relates to the applicant's request for conditional zoning. In Georgia, conditional zoning is a request where an applicant is seeking certain listed exemptions to zoning or use of a property that are not generally allowed as a matter of right within the zoning district. The type of zoning was originally designed to ensure that the listed use was not, would not negatively impact neighbors. Conditional zoning was designed to help developers, to help develop property under unusual site conditions, such as stream buffers and lakes and ponds and steep slopes, not to help a developer increase the density of the area. And Austin Lakes had those conditions. They had topography issues in a lake over there. Unfortunately, developers such as Venture Homes view conditional zoning as a means to feasibly pack as many homes in an area for the sake of profit. The property at question... The property at question here does not have any unusual site conditions that would require conditional zoning to accommodate this build. The conditions placed on zoning requested are specifically for the purpose of increasing the density of homes. Under zoning factor six, there are no existing or changing conditions affecting the use or development of the property that would require rezoning to RAD conditional. There's no benefit to the community for the property to be rezoned RAD conditional. It's not the community's responsibility nor the city's obligation to act as the accountant for Venture Homes when the property is suitable for development at its current zoning of Based on the applicant's failure to satisfy, satisfy zoning factor six, I respectfully request that you deny this rezoning request. And again, I thank y'all for hearing me out up here, and those that came to see the site. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and attention, council members and Mayor Bacon. My name is Laura Brett, and my family and I live at 3937 Cloudland Drive in Bennett Woods. But I've been a Smyrna resident for over 13 years now. This evening, I'm speaking about our schools. I have two young children, six and three. Three-year-old is obviously a couple of years away from school, but they're evidentially, evidently going to go to King Springs Elementary, which is why we chose to stay here. This issue is relevant to zoning factor number four, whether the zoning proposal will or could cause an excessive burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. As I mentioned, I've been here for 13 years, and like many other families, we chose to stay and make Smyrna our home, not only for the family-oriented community, but for the school district that we've seen improve year over year. We are now facing a challenge in our schools as we see the enrollment numbers steadily surpass capacity levels for King Springs Elementary and Griffin Middle School. It's fair to point out that Campbell High is still under capacity, but that it won't take too long for them too to be affected. The IMPACT study received, which was requested by the members of our community, shows the numbers as they stand today. Even with the two campuses for King Springs that recently happened, we are still over capacity, and with more RAD or RAD conditional zone developments such as this one, we will continue to see the numbers rise. Although splitting the King Springs campus has brought some relief to the situation, it is now placing an unnecessary burden on our families and the county to support both facilities. Every day operation, busing students from one campus to the other, safety, major issue, hiring additional staff and equipping the classrooms for proper education. Sending a school over capacity overburdens not only the physical space, but the teachers and the administration and their ability to teach effectively, to keep a discipline and a safe environment for our children to learn, and maintain that overall high standard of quality education and rankings that have attracted many families to this area, including my own. While we cannot be sure who will purchase these homes, we know that these are built as single-family units to attract families with a minimum of one child per household. I'm not going to do any more math, but that's pretty much 82 new school-aged children at a minimum. At this point, the only possibility we have for relief is the next SLOWS vote stated for 2018, which of course is not guaranteed to go our way. Many of us are seeing the writing on the wall. We've watched others opt to homeschool, choose private school, or worse, pack up their families and move and invest in communities where the schools are sought after and placed in, placed high on the priority list. We know growth is important for our community, but we need to make sure we're doing it responsibly, that the infrastructure and the school system can keep up with the growth without overwhelming. Like my neighbors, I love Smyrna. I want to see Smyrna succeed and become a sought-after community to live in, but not at the expect of our children's education. As for Smyrna's role here, I'm not sure what the solution is. Perhaps in course of due diligence, IMPACT studies are not being requested for whatever reason. Perhaps it's time to revise the city code to eliminate loopholes and meet our better, our current future needs. We trust that based on the positions you hold as our city council, you're more qualified to guide us and help us to move forward. We are happy and willing to help and assist in that. I thank you, council members, for your dedication and commitment, and trust that you will do the right thing for our city and our community, and vote against high-density housing in this community. Based on the applicant's failure to satisfy zoning factor number four, I respectfully request that you deny the rezoning request. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michelle Pickard. I live at 400 Ashley Court, and I thank you for the opportunity to be engaged in this process. I too wish to address school IMPACT or zoning factor number four. I have enjoyed Smyrna's resurgence immensely since I have actively chosen to return home for 15 years, 15 years ago, and have been inspired to pour my time and efforts into our schools. My husband and I are both proud alumni of King Springs, Griffin, and Campbell, and have been delighted to invest wholeheartedly in the community where we have very purposefully chosen to raise our children. As a volunteer, as a volunteer, I've served in many capacities, I believe have given me relevant perspective here. Regarding capacity challenges, I have diligently worked to help address overcrowding at King Springs through my service on the School Improvement Council. I have advocated at the school board level and with the county, and will continue to do so. While I know you're familiar with the data, much of which I sent you in an email today, you may be less familiar with the more tactical impacts, so I'd like to share a few examples in hopes that it helps inform your decisions. I know what it's like for children to not be allowed to run in PE classes in the gym because the large numbers of students make it too unsafe to do so. Imagine playing favorite childhood games such as tag by merely walking, let alone the impact to student focus in the classroom when children don't have an outlet for their boundless energy. I know what it's like for dedicated teachers to have innovative ideas and have the resources to implement them thanks to parent support, yet not have the adequate classroom space to do so. I know what it's like for the one and only computer lab, critical to teaching what should be core competency 21st century technology skills, to be sacrificed because it's needed for basic classroom space. I know what an inconvenience it is for over 200 students to be housed in trailers without convenient bathroom, water fountain, or handwashing access, let alone the lost instructional time and compromised student safety as hundreds of students travel back and forth to the main building throughout the day. I know what it's like as a foundation board member to have the strategic foresight, funding potential, and initiative to hire a computer science or Spanish teacher, and yet again, efforts are cut short as there is no space. I know what it's like as a parent to worry about how nearly 900 students will be safely sheltered during a tornado warning, knowing the building was designed for just 558 children. And perhaps you don't realize, King Springs faces an additional capacity challenge. Approximately 80% of the classrooms are undersized by today's building standards. When considered together, high enrollment and small classrooms equals big impact. Now, it's true that for the time being, King Springs is experiencing some very fleeting relief, but is already 13% over the combined capacity of the two buildings, and will continue to be strained more each year for many years to come. Each campus just this year now finally has highly coveted computer lab and a STEM lab, but if history repeats itself, these top assets could be the first on the chopping block to make room for regular classrooms. For that matter, the same could happen to any Smyrna school in response to rapid growth trends. I'd also like to acknowledge that in spite of these limitations, King Springs is still the highest achieving school in the southern half of the county. Shining bright as one of a number of great sister schools in our area that could be and should be used as models for success in South Cobb so that education in the entire region continues to improve. I believe the success is a testament to the spirit of the King Springs community and the wave of momentum for education in our Smyrna area. A spirit that would be better leveraged by working to tangibly enrich educational experiences for our children, and by banding together with our sister schools in Smyrna to advocate for equitable distribution of county resources, rather than being reduced to groveling for space before the school board, engaged in divisive rezoning battles within our own city, and petitioning our elected officials for what feels like fundamental educational rights. Perhaps my expectations are idealistic, but I hope to see my city and county leaders collaborate and work together in supporting our children, rather than be tempted to point fingers in the blame game at the expense of our children. I optimistically look to my elected leaders to continue leading by example in a spirit of cooperation and due diligence so that we education warriors can follow your lead as we too unite within Smyrna and the South Cobb area to work together, to work smarter, not harder. As the saying goes, it truly takes a village. Many of those in our village believe, myself included, that our schools are a cornerstone for a thriving community and deserve to succeed. I therefore have no choice but to oppose any rezoning, rezoning resulting in unnecessarily higher density. I fully understand that development is coming, that it has served us well, and that capacity challenges are here to stay, but I also believe a vote in favor of exacerbating our challenges is not in our best interest and has far-reaching implications. The reality is, the majority of soldiers currently in the pipeline now realize we will face this problem at every level of public school education should we continue to soldier on. So I ask you, rally the troops. Confirm our core belief that Smyrna success and school success can be synonymous. I respectfully ask that you vote to protect the quality of education and the community spirit that fuels our dedication to education. Help us protect our investment and maintain our forward momentum. Help us continue to thrive, not just survive, and we'd like to do the same for you. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Crooks, 4049 Whining Valley Drive, Bennett Woods. Thank you for this time this evening. My family's lived in the Smyrna area for 18 years now, and I'm a commercial real estate professional, working with home builders to do development, but I'm here in opposition to this development this evening. I'd like to talk about two main points. One, the density, R-20 is viable. And second, I'd like to talk about the unintended consequences of the subdivision. First, I'd like to discuss the density. In looking at the zoning review standards, item number three, does the property have reasonable economic use as zoned, which would be R-20? The answer is clearly yes. For a home builder, it's all about ratios. Land and site work typically for a home builder run between 30, I'm sorry, 20 and 33% of a home's sales price. If we look down the street at the North Cooper Lake Place Development, their ratios are running 21 to 22%. They've sold 10 homes so far, the average sales price has been $520,000, and their average lot cost has been $110,000. If we apply a similar ratio to the 15 lots that are being asked for, that, and which would be about 22% of $450,000, that would be $100,000 per lot. $100,000 times 15 lots is $1.5 million in land and site work. R-20, the way that I was able to find a definition, would equal about 10 houses over this piece of property. If the competitor, if their competitor down the street is selling their houses on RAD conditional currently for $520,000, Venture will have larger lots, more green space, larger homes, and should easily be able to command a higher value. Obviously, all of us who live around this proposed development like larger lots, that's why we live in R-20 zoned property. So, the effect, in order for the developer to get to inside their ratios, they would need to raise their prices to about $550,000 to $575,000. Their basis would be 26 to 27%. Tip, as I said earlier, for a home builder, their, the ratios that they want to try and get to are between 20 and 33%. 26 to 27% is right in the middle, it's right in the sweet spot of where a home builder needs to be. Second, I'd like to talk about the unintended consequences of putting a subdivision like this into this development. I want to go back to what the city has done and has had a track record of doing on the commercial side. When Walmart wanted to come into the Belmont Hills subdivision, or Belmont Hills area, the city council said no. When branch properties proposed the stuff across the street, the city said no, and the city has been very firm on the commercial side, but not so much on the residential side. This particular development touches 20 backyards. Unlike the newer developments, Tackett Farms and the North Cooper Lake properties, there's obviously several developments down there, none of them touch 20 other properties. Even Tackett Farms, which is substantially larger, only cover, only touches 19 properties, and it's considerably more houses. This jigsaw puzzle piece of a property is surrounded on all sides by R-20. And when I say all sides, literally, Mr. Bettes is on the North Cooper Lake roadside of the property. The north, south, east, and west sides of this property all are bound by R-20 except for the 80, the 80-foot buffer that he has to put his driveway in. I've looked at the, what the, what the city staff put together for the memo, and I looked at all of the developments that were utilized, and none of them had, all of them had frontage on a major road. This property doesn't really have any frontage. It literally has an alleyway or an accessway to get to it. If you're ready for the next developer to walk in here with a handful of parcels inside Bennett Woods, or inside Forest Hills, or the Highlands, are you ready for them to ask for RAD? Unfortunately, an older neighborhood like ours, we don't have deed restrictions, we don't have an HOA, and other hurdles that would keep people from assembling properties inside of our neighborhoods. We rely on zoning and planning, and the council, and the mayor, for your, you are our only hope and our only defense. I believe you're going to see a loss of charm and a sense of place if you continue to allow developments like this to continue, to go forward. In conclusion, the math works, the economics are very reasonable to keep this development zoned R-20 and build a better product and ask for a better development moving forward. This is a very densely designed subdivision that's wedged onto a crazy assemblage of lots in between 20 existing homes. As we open up the unintended consequences of redevelopment and rezoning, at some point, you lose the charm that brought all of us to this city. I ask you please to deny the zoning, and I appreciate your time listening to me. Thanks.
Thank you, council members and Mayor Bacon, for your time and attention. My name is Melinda Hill, and I live at 622 Austin Drive at the corner of North Cooper Lake and Austin Drive with my spouse, Kelly Johnson. I've lived in Smyrna for over 12 years and at this address for four years. We love Smyrna and plan to raise our family here. I am speaking about our concerns about the proposed development, especially in light of zoning standard number four. The proposed, proposed development will cause an excessive burden on existing utilities. Our home is directly across from front corner of the proposed development. My spouse and I share many of the same concerns as the citizens that you are hearing from tonight. Specifically, I want to address our concerns about the sewer system. My spouse added her voice to the opposition at the last planning and zoning meeting when she spoke about our concerns regarding the sewer system that runs down North Cooper Lake and its ability to handle the number of homes being added. The sewer system has backed up into our front yard and home twice in the last few years. years. Dramatically, each time the sewer has backed up into our yard and home, my spouse spoke to the men from Smyrna Utilities that fixed the issue. They all said that it is an issue with the sewer system in that area, and the problem would be likely to happen again. Since the planning and zoning meeting, no one we have spoken to has adequately responded to our concern but to tell us that it is unwarranted. However, if there is an issue with the sewer system in the area, as there has already proven to be, it will not ease with the increased density, density, just the opposite. The proposed development will cause excessive burden on the sewer system at North Cooper Lake. Based on the applicant's failure to satisfy zoning standard four, I respectfully request that you deny the applicant's rezoning application.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sharon Rice, and I live at 4294 Fawn Lane in Smyrna, and this is my daughter, Madison Johnson. I have lived in the home since it was built in nineteen seventy-three. I am concerned that what you're doing is setting a precedent for other developers to come into neighborhoods like Deerwood and do the same thing. I remarried in nineteen, in two thousand and thirteen. Sorry. And at that time, we had the choice of buying a new home, living in his home, or remodeling our existing home. This one beside me is the reason we stayed where we are. With the school system being what it was, I volunteer, I do what I can do, but it's overcrowded, and you're putting more homes in areas that, she begged me to stay. She didn't want us to even look at Austin Lakes. We know our neighbors, they were the same neighbors from when I was there. They've asked me to come and speak for them, a lot of them, and they're in their eighties at this time. When she was little, I said to her, if they call out Sharon, they're talking to you. You look just like me, respond. We don't want this in our neighborhoods, we don't want this in our community. She is our future, she begged me to stay, I stay. Please do what's right, but our schools are suffering. My son is in fifth grade at King Springs. He sits four to a seat on his bus. This bus would go through this neighborhood and through this development to pick up. He's complaining because he's in fifth grade and he wants more seats in the back. They don't have enough seats as it is on his bus going to King Springs. Four to a seat is too much. I don't want to see my child on the news, sitting in the floor of a school bus. She would like to have something to say as well.
My school is, the education is your future, we are your future. If you put our education on the line, your future, our, our world's future is at jeopardy. When I was in sixth grade, there were thirty-six kids in my class. It was two teachers, a student teacher and our main teacher, and it was diff, it was a difficult learning environment because you were put in groups of maybe six to an assignment, and that was very difficult to understand the concept because you had a very small job. In my classes now, it's, I have six classes a day, and when you are told that the teacher can't help you with this because they have to help the kids who have lower grades than you, it's harder and confusing because you have no idea what they're talking about. So your grades begin to drop, then everyone's grades begin to drop, and that's not helping anyone.
Just so you know, she attends Griffin Middle School in eighth grade, she's had straight A's since kindergarten, she's in advanced placement. I went to King Springs, Griffin, and Campbell and graduated. I'm proud Panther, sorry that you're Spartans now, but our future is here. Please help me help her keep a community the way she envisioned it.
Thank you.
Before we get to the next speaker, it's, I really wish, and we have a great school board representative in Susan Thayer, I really wish there were some folks from the school here, as this is a problem that is really not all about the city of Smyrna. It's the school system itself, and we have been, a lot of times, we've been, we've gotten the short end of the stick, and I know how that is. You won't find another city that supports the school system, even though it's not our school system, more than Smyrna, Georgia does. And we give those schools things that they would not get if it was not for the city of Smyrna. But I hear your pain about King Springs. That is one of the best schools in the state. People are attracted to this area because of King Springs Elementary. Griffin's getting better every day, and so is Campbell, and those are good things to have, but oftentimes, it's sort of dumped in our lap to say, you can't develop anything because the schools have not caught up yet. Schools really have never, ever, ever caught up. I'm not saying that to be mean, but it's just the truth. They, I know they've been trying to get bathrooms redone over at King Springs for years, but anyway, I just say that to not try to fire anybody up, but let you know I'm still awake.
Hello, council may, council members and Mayor Bacon. My name is Sharon Ben Dove. I reside at 418 Wood Valley Court in 30082 in Bennett Woods. My parents built on one of the last available lots in Bennett Woods in nineteen seventy-three. Like Sharon, who I've known since I was eight, I was educated at King Springs, Griffin, and Campbell, and I purchased my childhood home eleven years ago, so I've lived there the majority of my adult life, and I've chosen to renovate the home. I purchased for the large lot, which is three-quarters of an acre, the brick construction, the open space, ample trees, and the strong sense of community and a forward-looking council that was also very judicious. I'd like to touch on the history of Bennett Woods, Pineview, Austin Lakes, Deerwood, and Smyrna as a whole, which is relevant to Georgia law zoning factor three, and also seven, which, as you've heard, addresses whether development of the property under the proposal will conform or be a detriment to or enhance the standards, open space requirements, and aesthetics of the general neighborhood, considering the current historical and planned uses in the area. As many of you know, countless pillars in the city, as well as other hard-working citizens have and do call Bennett Woods and these other neighborhoods home. The priceless historical threads of Smyrna are not safeguarded only by the costly preservation of very visible landmarks, but they're woven by the people, the generations of families who have and do still call Smyrna home. These are parents and children and grandchildren to numerous accounts, such as Austin's, the Bacon's, Mr. Bett's, who's too modest to say he gave more than twenty-five years of service as a fireman to this city, the Boyd's, the Davises, the Franchinis, the Ferguson's, the Harrises, the Lillies, the Nelsons, the Pates, the Pickers, the Rice's, the Smiths, Stoners, Suddus, Watsons, and on and on. For anyone who truly knows this area and its people, you know that the cycle of return, renewal, and multiple generations of locals, as well as newcomers living side by side, proves that these neighborhoods can and do revitalize themselves without wedged in out-of-character infill development. If developers are lying in wait, as we have evidence they are, based on a nearby rubble pile on Plum, Plum Crest, for residents to age and die off, it is a miscalculation. I think you can see that those of us speaking tonight recognize that without development, our neighborhoods would not exist, and we would not even be having this conversation. But the invasive and even alarming nature in which zoning and development are being handled are now at a detrimental cumulative tipping point, turning Smyrna into a place where citizens are supremely frustrated. Potential residents are very skeptical of overdevelopment, and our hard-won investments are at risk of serious devaluation. Let's focus for just a moment on Bennett Woods. It's one of the most, it's one of many vibrant historic neighborhoods whose history, in my mind, is equivalent to Smyrna history. Bennett Woods was formerly farmland and orchards, and Max, as you know, I'm sorry, Mayor Bacon, as you know, it was first developed by Rem Bennett Senior and Junior and built to very high standards by only a few builders. Rem himself served on the council, and when I asked him recently what he remembered most about the land, he is a man of few words, he said, "It was just beautiful." This quality and the brick ranch, solid aesthetic, is something that many locals and new movers still want and value over tightly-packed new builds. And to give you a little bit of trivia, one of the most distinctive features of Bennett Woods has always been the brick mailboxes that were required, and it was a longstanding source of fascination for visitors, just like our covered bridge, Rough Mill, Aunt Fanny's Cabin, and the grand dom of Bronner's. And Bennett Woods has also been extremely cohesive, with a garden club that has served the city and county continually for forty-one years, and now we have a very active citizen-run neighborhood watch program, both of which function beautifully, a reflection of the commitment of the citizens to make a warm, livable neighborhood and city. You may ask why we're here before you, pleading our case for ourselves and for each other, why we're working so hard, why would some of us, like myself, who live on the other side of the neighborhood or don't even see the Venture development, why are we here? Why is there so much solidarity? Let me give you one reason. I'll give you two, actually. If you walk the property of these highly affected residents like Mr. Bett's, Mr. Dunn, Patsy Carter, as I have, and photographed it, you'll see how devastating and absolutely out-of-character this higher-density infill development is. It is truly senseless to me that the developer has dug in unwilling to compromise significantly and conform at least a bit more closely to the immediately surrounding R-20 standard. Also, the city should always first and, first and always respect and protect property rights and due process for residents over and before bestowing extra and enhanced rights to developers. We are not radically anti-development, we are not unwelcoming, as was implied by our councilmen in our recent town hall. We're simply asking for a full, reasonable, and ethical consideration of the state and municipal, municipal factors that you are bound to consider in determining whether this project will enhance or be a detriment to our neighborhoods, our infrastructure, and our schools. We've survived many election cycles, we will survive many more, and at this critical moment, we are absolutely begging for the help of you, our elected council, to stop our history, our home values, and our quality of life from being damaged irreparably. Based on Venture Homes' failure to satisfy zoning factors and the clear objections of your voting constituents, I respectfully request that you deny the application as currently configured. Thank you.
Thank you for attention, council members and Mayor Bacon. My name is Laura Lamb, I'm a resident of 526 Pineview Drive. I've been there for a little over two years, been a resident of Smyrna for a little over seven years. When we were looking for a home to buy, it took us a little over a year to find a home because we were strictly focusing in the North Cooper Lake area of Bennett Woods and the surrounding areas, for the reasons that have already been stated. My property will be adjacent to the current proposed development on my back side, so in the current proposed development from my dining room and my kitchen, I will be looking at thirty-five feet of wall, eight houses across. You were told that was one hundred and sixty-five feet from the back of my house. What you were not told is that the houses in front of me, a hundred and forty feet, are only at max fifteen feet tall, not thirty-five. That is almost double, if not actually more, than what we actually, as a neighborhood, all the way around are. Also, just to clarify, the square footage of our lots in Pineview Manor around are eighteen thousand to seventeen to eighteen thousand, some go to about fifteen thousand. That is still double the size that's been proposed by this site. I have previously raised my concerns at the planning and zoning meetings, and now speak with my community and opposition to this zoning application. My focus tonight is Venture Homes' current development that has not been stated once in, to show us what we are to expect. This issue is relevant to zoning factor number five, whether the zoning proposal is in conformity with the policy and intent of the land use plan, and zoning factor number seven, whether the development of the property under the zoning proposal will conform to be a detriment to enhanced architectural standards, open space requirements, and aesthetics of the general neighborhood, considering the current historical and planned uses in the area. First, let's focus on factor number five. Per Smyrna Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as a requirement or goal, that infill property preserve the character of the neighborhood. The comprehensive plan defines an infill property as a subdivision of vacant land and/or demolition of existing structures in established communities that require the installation of new streets to access the buildable lot. The proposed development is an infill property and thus not preserve the character of the neighborhood. Instead, it is doing the opposite. Smaller lot sizes, higher density, and going through two existing neighborhoods does not conform with the policy and the intent of the land use plan. Venture Homes also keeps trying to justify its proposed higher-density subdivision with the idea that this will be four fifty to five hundred thousand dollar homes and will improve the property value of the surrounding homes. That's already been addressed. The Venture Homes has a history, so we should look to its history to see what sort of product it will produce. Looking at the site plans of the recent subdivisions that Venture Homes has done, posted on their website, this subdivision looks exactly the same. Greer Park, I believe this might be Watson, they don't look any different. Lot sizes are all under an acre, actually, they're even smaller, just like the one being The same type of road, cul-de-sac and narrow lots consistently under the third acre. The same oversized detention ponds, and they're actually outlined here in this one, they're actually the size of three lots in that detention pond. You can see the lack of trees and green space in the pictures of the communities online, and according to Sean Randall, he cannot show us a home that Venture Homes has done anywhere near this price range since nineteen ninety-five, as you stated at the town hall meeting last week. The homes they build and sell range from the low one-hundreds to the mid-two-hundreds and seem to stay on the outskirts of town to keep the price range and the larger homes. There's nothing to show that it's not exactly the product that we're being told will be produced here. My concern as an architect, I know what value engineering is. With all this money put into all the requirements, hydraulics, trees, and everything else put into, for him to make profit, it will come at the later end, which would be quality of the home. Bennett Woods, Pineview Manor, and the homes in the area have been known for the quality and uniqueness with which they were built. Venture Home is known, is not known for its quality, it is known for its cookie cutter mass, produce communities. If you look online to the pictures, they're all the same. The Harrington plan we were giving is the same, it's just named differently for this Venture Home is not a developer for this area. We should not conform to a developer with being so sought after. The developer should seek the conformity of our city in Smyrna and what we're seeking as a community. Its products and aesthetics do not meet the standards of our neighborhood. Under zoning factor number seven, this Venture Home development will be a detriment to the standards of current neighborhood. Lot sizes, oversized home for the immediate area, and higher density are not what sets Bennett Woods, Pineview Manor, and surrounding neighborhoods as desired neighborhoods of Smyrna. Under zoning factor seven, we can also see the aesthetics of the general neighborhood are not addressed by the developer, and lack of consideration has been given to the current historical and planned uses in the area. Based on the applicant's failure to satisfy zoning factors five and seven, I respectfully request that you deny the zoning request. Thank you.
Will you hold this? Hold this in. This is going to be relevant in a minute. This is ten feet. The buffer around the project, okay? Think about how many really good trees you can look, you can put in that.
Okay. My name is Kaye Clapper, and I live at 3927 Plum Crest Road for twelve, over twelve years. I've lived in Smyrna for thirty years. I also love Smyrna. I'm speaking to the issues five, seven, eight, and nine, and I won't read them because I think you get the picture. In the late nineteen sixties and early nineteen seventies, when our homes were built, the land that was developed contained native trees and plants that were indigenous to Georgia. Because we were zoned R-20, our lots were between half an acre and three-quarters of an acre, which allowed the developer to leave a lot of native trees and plants in each yard. And when I say native, I mean trees and plants that had been naturally growing in Georgia for centuries. As a result, plants and trees such as native azaleas, wax myrtles, red cedar, American elm, flowering dogwood, red hickory, red mulberry, southern magnolia, Georgia oak, Georgia live oak, yellow poplar, red maple, walnut, sweet gum, and long-leaf pines were left in our yards. The long-leaf pine is the major tree on this property. In the nineteen seventies, there were ninety million acres of long-leaf pines, and it stretched from Virginia down to Florida, across Georgia, all the way to Texas. This year, there's only three million acres of long-leaf pines left, and that's not in Georgia. That's only from North Carolina to Florida, to Georgia, across to Louisiana. The long-leaf pine is now considered an endangered species. Long-leaf pines were historically important to the development of Georgia, and they're really a truly amazing tree. They grow on a broad range of habitats, from dry mountain slopes to sandy swampy soils. Ships and railroads were built with their wood because it's extremely strong. Long-leaf pines provide shelter for native wildlife species, many of which are found nowhere else but in long-leaf forests. Its large taproot provides a firm anchor, helping the tree withstand strong winds. These trees are resistant to drought, withstand floods, hurricanes, resist insects... drought, withstand floods, hurricanes, resist insects like the pine beetle, and disease. A longleaf pine can live up to 400 years and grow to be over 100 feet tall. It takes 150 years for one tree to grow to maturity. The seeds from these trees feed a multitude of birds and animals, and the trunks provide nesting places for various Georgia native birds. Unfortunately, the ivory-billed woodpecker used to make its home only in longleaf pines, but now is extinct in Georgia because of the loss of these pines. The red cocaded woodpecker makes its nest in the longleaf pine also, but it is also on the endangered species list, soon to be extinct due to the loss of its habitat, the longleaf pine. Georgia's conservation priorities include more than 20 native animal and 56 native plant species associated with the longleaf ecosystem. Almost half of our birds and native birds in Georgia are becoming extinct because of loss of habitat. Besides being home and sheltered to birds and animals, longleaf pines are important to people as well. Trees increase, these trees increase property value when strategically planted, provide savings on utility bills. Trees and forests provide billions of dollars worth of nature's benefit to people with no direct costs. In exchange for producing oxygen, longleaf pines absorb carbon dioxide and trap dust, ash, pollen, and smoke from the air. One tree can remove six tons of carbon dioxide from the air. Longleaf pines prevent soil erosion, increase water quality, provide shade, and reduce temperatures in areas, making a difference in our urban environment. The consequences of when you cut down an ecosystem like this is there's a chain reaction. Each plant and animal that is lost affects other plants and animals. And once these trees are cut down, they are gone forever. They're not going to be back. Trying to say a 10-foot buffer of non-native plants that he's going to plant can compare to what is being taken down is an affront to my intelligence, and it's an insult. It really is. You cannot replace this. Where will all these birds and animals go? They will go to our yards, of course, because our yards are the ones left with these trees. I have eight of these in my yard. If the zoning remains R20, like all of the surrounding neighborhoods and our neighborhood, the developer will be able to save many of these indigenous trees and the native birds and wildlife that is supported by them. It is up to you, development versus native habitat and ecosystem. Money in the pocket of the developer versus saving an endangered tree that has a long history in Georgia. Basic greed versus saving wildlife and a native forest. I beg you, please, don't approve this rad development.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Bacon, and thank you for your time and attention. And I have to say, after that discussion of trees, I feel pretty bad giving you a stack of paper.
This is like 20 of those trees.
Really sorry about that. My name is Ellen Williams. I live at 3796 Plumcrest Road. My husband and I have lived in our home since February of 97. Our 14-year-old daughter, Mary, is a freshman at Campbell High School. Go Spartans. More than 18 years ago, we sought out a Bennett Woods home because we loved the traditional brick ranch construction, the large lots, the mature trees, and the feeling of community that Smyrna offered. Thank you. Driving through Bennett Woods, we noted the well-maintained yards and homes and knew that this was a neighborhood where people cared. The people in our community still care. A lot of people. More than 820 people, as it turns out. I am here tonight to speak about the community petition against rezoning proposal Z15-007. Thank you for handing out copies of that petition. It has the signatures as of about 12:30 today. We are continuing to get more signatures. The petition raises issues related to zoning factor number five, is the proposal in conformity with the land use plan, and factor number nine, whether the proposed use would negatively affect the adjoining property and neighborhood. I realize you do not vote based on numbers, but these numbers are people who deserve to be heard, and 800 people have not signed up to speak tonight, so that's a good thing. We launched the petition the evening of July 27. Within three hours, we had more than 100 supporters. In fewer than 10 days, more than 600 people had signed our petition. As of this meeting, the number is at over 820 supporters. The vast majority are from Smyrna, especially the immediate area. More than 90% of our supporters are from ZIP codes 30082 and 30080. 600 of them are from 30082, where the parcel is located. That's 75% of the total number of people who signed are right around the community. Clearly, this is an issue of intense interest in our local community. This petition represents the voices of Smyrna residents. We didn't conduct an organized social media campaign or canvass door-to-door, and I didn't call my mom in North Carolina to sign the petition. We simply published the petition, and supporters got the word out to their friends and neighbors via Facebook, email, and neighborhood online communities. The development in question has touched a nerve. Our petition garnered more than 230 comments. So many respondents speak from the heart of the unique character and beauty of Smyrna, and I'm going to read just a few. "We specifically bought in this part of Smyrna because of the established neighborhoods, mature trees, and large lots. The schools are already too crowded, traffic already a challenge. Let's stay true to the Smyrna plan. I live in Deerwood and love our trees, quiet streets, and special neighborhoods. I am reminded daily how lucky we are in this area of Smyrna to live in our little area where breathing room matters." People are concerned about the direction we are taking. The stated goals of the city's comprehensive plan for single-family residential also include redevelopment must be compatible with existing neighborhood patterns, and suburban residential neighborhoods feature a high degree of building separation. When our petition speaks about an effective density of nearly four units an acre, we are not using the zoning textbook definition of density. We realize this is not a high-density apartment complex. However, 15 two-story homes, many of them 10 feet apart, placed in the midst of two existing R20 neighborhoods, feels very crowded and dense. The three projects cited on North Cooper Lake are different. They have frontage on North Cooper Lake Road. The proposed development relies on a new public road, which will be cut between existing homes. This cul-de-sac development will be inserted into the backyards of established one-story homes on large lots with tall pines and large green yards. New houses will be 35 feet high with front setbacks as little as 30 feet, side setbacks as small as five feet, making them 10 feet apart. Hardly a high degree of separation. I would like to emphasize that this petition is not anti-development. Our petition urges the council and mayor to delay development of this property until a more appropriate proposal is submitted for this infill area. We think the current R20 designation is appropriate. But based on the applicant's failure to satisfy zoning factors five and nine, I respectfully request, on behalf of more than 800 people who have signed our petition, that you deny this rezoning request. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Charles Hunter. I live at 6221 Traymore Trace, Austin Lake subdivision. I live on the end of Traymore Trace. We have several people from Austin Lake here tonight, including three board members. I'm one of the board members. I serve as the treasurer of the Homeowners Association. Twice, first after the initial proposal that had the extra home, the Board of Directors, when we had our, we meet every month, when we had our monthly meeting, we resolved unanimously against this rezoning. Then he took one of the homes out and put an extra home and crammed an extra home into the other development, not the part that was fronting on the street, but the part that was in the interior. And then he resubmitted it, and we again voted unanimously. And everybody unanimously, the board did, to oppose the rezoning. And I haven't talked to anybody at Austin Lake that is in favor of it. As a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, you said, well, everybody in favor of it or who is opposed to it should come up and speak. If anybody in, is everybody in here that is a resident of the city of Smyrna who is opposed to this rezoning, whether or not you're going to speak, could you please stand Thank you very much. If you could sit down. And if anybody here that is not the developer who I don't believe lives in the Smyrna, in the city of Smyrna, or the seller who obviously has an interest in it, if you are a resident of the city of Smyrna and you are not the developer or the seller or the seller's family, and you're in favor of this development, could you please stand up? So we know how the people feel about it, and I know you can't just say, well, we can't just do, it's not a popularity contest and that sort of thing. But why are these people all here in solidarity and in very unusual numbers for this zoning request? I mean, is it, why, what is the reason for that? Would you please ask yourself that? Because it is because it adversely affects the community. Now, the developer talked about, well, you know, I've got some homes that might be 15 to 17 feet apart, and they're not quite as close, but the setback line for each home is going to be five feet. And we know why there's a problem. The problem is, he won't budge on the density of the houses and the houses being this close together because it's going to cost him too much money to do it. Somebody can develop this property and still make money on it. And if you deny the zoning, there'd be no question that there's going to be another development. The houses are going to be spaced out nicely, and it's going to be more in conformity with the neighborhood. Somebody's going to develop the property. I'm not anti-development. I think most of the people here are not anti-development. But if you take 10 feet, if you took a five-foot side setback, and then you've got for the next house has a five-foot setback, that's 10 feet. And if the roofs of the two houses stick out, I looked at mine today, and it was about maybe two and a half feet on my roof. I don't know what this developer has in mind. That's five feet between roofs. I don't know about squirrels in Mr. Randall's neighborhood, but squirrels in my backyard can make that jump. That's not a problem. Now, that is entirely too close. And you know, the other thing that I really object to is this comparison. Well, Austin Lake, where you live, that's RAD also. But as Rusty said, RAD conditional is a site plan-specific zoning. And if you look even on our, on our street with the smallest lots, I'll get into that in a minute, there are no houses in Austin Lake that are 10 feet apart, or even 15 feet apart, or 17 feet apart, like Mr. Randall says, well, you know, they're going to be all 17 feet apart. Nothing in our subdivision is that close together. Nothing. If you go on Terrace Court, which is the smallest lots in the subdivision, and yes, if you just go on the square footage, yeah, they're equivalent to some of the lots, those small lots are equivalent to some of these lots that he's talking about, but they're spaced apart. They're not long skinny lots, long, deep, thin lots like he's talking about in the subdivision. That's what he's talking about. Long, thin lots that go real deep, and the houses where the roofs can be five feet apart, and the houses can be 10 feet apart. That's what he's talking about. So I would ask that the council vote against this rezoning, that to keep it R20, if it's going to get developed at R20, somebody else, this developer or somebody else will come in and do it. I'd ask for every council member to oppose it. And respectfully, Mr. Mayor, I know you've done this before. If it does pass on a contested vote, I would ask you to veto it. Thank you.
Bruce Davis, 471 Havelon. I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I'm all about density and urbanization, and I appreciate it. And I know we got to have it. Without it, I'm broke. But what I want to point out is that Mr. Randall may have just picked the wrong site. This is not an infill site. It's in the middle of an R20 neighborhood. It's not adjacent to any institutional use, or any commercial use, or any major travel corridor. It's in the middle of Bennett Woods. And that's why you've got this outpouring. The only point that I have not heard mentioned tonight is that it might have been the chief over here was talking about the pride we show in this new hook and ladder fire truck. I live at the corner of Havelon and Cloudland. And if there happened to be a pileup on Cloudland, and the fire truck needs to get over there, he could pull through my yard with that big new 75-foot hook and ladder truck. In fact, he could do donuts in my yard. And he could, and Patsy's, my neighbor's yard too. Of course, she just got sodded. She'd be pissed. But except for a few oak trees and walls here and there, most of the owners in Bennett Woods could accommodate this new fire truck, or any of the old ones for that matter. But if we have three, four, or five cars get jammed in on this one inlet street to Mr. Randall's subdivision that dead ends in the cul-de-sac, boom, everybody on that thing's going up in flames. And I know you've got the fire marshal that's approved the deal and all that, but there's got to be some what-ifs somewhere. So I'm all against having it be approved, and thank you for your time.
I guarantee you, he wasn't part of the show.
Hi, my name is Chris Risher. I've actually lived in Green Forest, which is right across the street from Bennett Woods across North Cooper Lake. I live at 3922 Lake Drive. My wife and I moved here specifically for KSE, but I'm not really going to talk about that because they already, they already kind of really went at that pretty hard, I think. I think more that I wanted to kind of bring the attention where there are actually two more properties in Green Forest that are on Zillow right now that are potentially going to have this happen again. So if it doesn't happen, if you don't, if you allow it now, we're going to have the same argument four or five years down the road. The two addresses are 4015 Green Forest Parkway Southeast Smyrna, Georgia, 30082, and 3550 Lake Drive. Both of those are currently being proposed as infill development properties. One's 3.6 acres and one's 5.1 acres. So I'm just really concerned that we're just going to have the same problem happen again. If we decide that we're going to set this precedence now, we're just going to have the same argument. So my wife and I would ask that you guys kill this now and not have an argument later on, too. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Robbie Hewitt. I live at 3759 Cloudland Drive. Tonight, I'd like to bring to focus a little bit more the zoning issue number four, the excessive or burdensome use of our roadways. The Smyrna Police Department did a traffic study the week of July 19 through 26, very near where the proposed development will flow onto North Cooper Lake Road. That study found an average traffic count of 2,623 vehicles per day. The AJC reported in an August article 2,623 vehicles per day. The AJC reported in an August article that traffic increased approximately 18% once schools started in the city of Smyrna. If we were to say that North Cooper Lake only increased by 10%, not the 18% the citywide increased on an average, then we would say that there's approximately 2,885 vehicles per day traveling on North Cooper Lake Road. The Institute of Transportation Engineers estimates that each new home built adds 10 vehicle trips per day to the surrounding roads. Cooper Lake Place Development has 11 yet to be sold homes, and Park Place Development has been approved for another 11 homes. Using the ITE estimator, the vehicle count on North Cooper Lake Road can be increased to approximately 3,105 with those 22 homes being sold. This proposed development of 15 homes will add another 150 vehicles to the surrounding roads on a daily count, bringing it to 3,255 per day. We should also consider that the new park at the south end of North Cooper Lake is going to additionally bring traffic along North Cooper Lake Road. Keep in mind that this traffic estimator was developed over 40 years ago in 1976, although it's still in use today. I would say to you that this estimator is probably on the shy side of accurate. So even with this, what I believe to be inaccurate estimator, we've already seen traffic increase on North Cooper Lake Road by 20%. Adding this development will add an additional 6% on top of that. GDOT reports 25 accidents at North Cooper Lake and Concord intersection, and seven accidents on North Cooper Lake Road itself in the last three years. Can we expect a 26% increase in accidents on these, at this intersection and along this road stretch? We are fast approaching already the need to realign and signalize the intersection of North Cooper Lake and Concord. This proposed development will only exasperate the need to do that. I believe that North Cooper Lake Road is nearing its capacity from the developments already approved, and there is no additional capacity available for this dense of a development to be approved. I'd like to also speak to you a little bit about zoning analysis number nine. The property owners at 3710 and 3726 North Cooper Lake Road will have a new street within 20 feet of their structures. This proposal envisions what was two driveway right-of-ways into a public roadway. Again, if we use that same ITE estimator, these two residents with a public road within 20 feet of their structures are going to see roughly 150 vehicles a day passing by their bedrooms. Is that not a pretty significant impact to those people? The other significant, well, that impact alone is most likely going to devalue their properties. The increased traffic that will, from these rad developments on North Cooper Lake Road is going to exasperate the problem of the cut-through traffic that we currently experience in Bennett Woods on Highview. You live on this street. I mean, how much more traffic, cut-through traffic do we need coming through Bennett Woods on Highview? And it's inevitable that it's going to increase as we add more and more traffic to North Cooper Lake Road. Everyone wants to say this is not high-density development. When you put single-family homes in, in perspective of, and exclude multifamily homes, 10-foot separation is high-density. I don't see how anyone can say it's not high-density. Anyway, my time's running out. I'd like to say thank you for your attention tonight. I hope that this is something you don't find favorable for our, for our neighborhood. And I urge you to deny this zoning proposal. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and for your attention tonight, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Matt Callaway, and I live on Traymore Trace in Austin Lake. Charles Hunter is one of my next-door neighbors. The other neighbor is the Plain House, Tom Lilly, who is a well-known lifelong Smyrna resident. It's a treat being able to live next door to him. Most of my points here have, quite frankly, been made already. So I'm going to try to be brief. I know it's getting late. And we all have other jobs to get to in the morning as well. But I'm a fourth-generation native Atlantean. My mother's a Campbell High School graduate. And my wife and I spent a year looking all over the northern half of the metro area, looking for a place to raise our family. And we moved to Smyrna, first one in four generations to move outside the perimeter. And families finally making the trek out to Smyrna to see us because mom gets to see her granddaughter play in the same gym she played in at Campbell. That's beside the point. But we're, look, growth is an inevitability. We all recognize that. Growth is essential, is essential to the continued livelihood of any community, but it must be done responsibly. Smart growth is good. Growth that is unsuitable and not in conformity with the surrounding established community, that's not smart growth, in my opinion. Of course, the council, you know, is aware of and must take all of the legal factors into account. The nine, nine zoning factors have all been touched on many times tonight. And the council also has a right, and I would say the responsibility, to consider in your decision-making process, you know, the ramifications of this application's impact to the community at large, as it coincides with the cumulative impact of other applications that have already been approved. Because, as you know, down North Cooper Lake Road, this application to Venture Homes is a request to build 15 homes. To all of us here tonight, it's not so much a request to build 15 homes. It's a request to build homes numbered 68 through 82 in our community on the same street in a very short period of time. You know, why, why now? Why is this touch the nerve? I, I feel like I'm late to the party. This is the first zoning meeting, council meeting I've, I've ever come to. I think we're all late to the party. Mr. Randall uses homes 1 through 67 as evidence that his houses, 68 through 82, you know, may be suitable relative to recent development. But this sets an extraordinarily dangerous precedent. Developers have received word, you know, have received the message loud and clear that Smyrna, it's open season to infill Smyrna. And we, as Smyrna residents, are here tonight to let you know that we're not okay with that. Respectfully, the citizens of North Cooper Lake Road, Bennett Woods, and over the months that this has dragged on, more and more citizens of Smyrna at large that are gathered here tonight are here just to say it's time to slow down the infill. You know, we're not against development. Don't misunderstand our intentions, but it should be sound and reasonable development. And, you know, with that being said, and with what I've heard tonight, based on the applicant's failure to, in my opinion, you know, provide actual answers, more than one sentence kind of restatements, to many of the nine questions in this rezoning analysis, I respectfully request that you deny this particular zoning application. Thank you for your time.
I don't remember you getting sworn in.
Right over there. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Kristin Hauser-Suddath, and I live at 4045 North Cooper Lake, or as we affectionately call it at our house, the Tulane Dead End Autobahn. And, you know, we've seen three developments go in, in the last five to six years. As Mr. Randall, I'm assuming, is referring to my mother as the poor woman who had her backyard washed out. And that wasn't a poor woman who had her backyard washed out. That was a 20 some odd thousand dollar mistake by the city, by that developer, and by others that had responsibility. So while I didn't come here to address that issue, I want to be very clear that $20,000 is a lot of money. I don't know what tax bracket you live in, but it's a whole lot of money at our house as we're starting to pay for college. What I want to talk about is the traffic.
How else am I needs to start the clock?
I have no doubt. The traffic in this area is already outrageous. The more houses you add, the more traffic you're going to get. You know, Mr. Hewitt spoke to a lot of fabulous statistics. I can speak to my front yard. And it's all the time. It is constant. In fact, I'm one of the best places in Smyrna to put up your election signs. Why? Because there's an enormous amount of traffic in my front yard. Everybody wants a sign on my front yard because of the traffic. And we're only adding to the cause. We're adding to it. My concern, in addition to this burdening the schools, burdening this dead-end road that's going nowhere because the other side of it is a silver comet trail. So unless you're planning on building a very expensive bridge, it's going to continue to be a Tulane dead-end road until you let so many people like Mr. Randall infill that you got to widen the road. And there's only one way to do that. And that's to come through my front yard. And that's not going to be a fun day for me, and it's not going to be a fun day for you. And my concern is, is that we need to start now setting a precedent that says we are doing the right thing for the citizens that already live here. I don't know where Mr. Randall lives. I'm guessing if they have three-legged squirrels, it's not Smyrna. I mean, that's just my best guess. Because I've been here for 41 years, which is exactly how old I am. And for all of them, except for the four that I was in college, I lived off North Cooper Lake Road. And to see the change is unbelievable. But the one thing I will point out that's different about this subdivision than the ones that he's loving to use as the comparison, for the reason that you should do this is this. Westbrook was built on a farm with one structure, and it was multiple acres. It wasn't surrounded by houses. Two-thirds of it was on North Cooper Lake Road, directly next to it, North Cooper Lake Place, across the street from my in-laws. I'm very familiar with this property. It did back up, but the vast majority, that was road franchise on North Cooper Lake Road. If you go back and you look at now the one that's behind them, it's, it's, three sides of it are against your own park. So you're not impacting the people that you're impacting that already own property here, that bought that property for that reason. You know, when we looked at property, we stayed right where we grew up because we were able to buy a solid house on a large lot. A large lot that I'll add for you now, that my nieces and nephews cannot play in the front yard of, because again, I live on the Smyrna Autobahn. I would urge you, based on the fact that this applicant has not satisfied, in my mind, the requirements. You know, you've been told time and time again, and I won't read them for you, of the nine requirements that they are supposed to satisfy at least some percentage of, specifically for, this is overburdening our roads, specifically not, it's affecting the people that already live there. It doesn't make sense for this city, and it certainly doesn't make sense for North Cooper Lake Road. And I urge you to decline this, this application. Thank you.
Anyone else that was sworn in?
I might be the end of the train.
You are the end of the train.
I might be the end of the train. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Allegra Goodman. I live at 3847 Plumcrest Road in Bennett Woods, where I've resided for almost 10 years with my husband and my eight-year-old son. Firstly, I have come to many of your meetings for a while now, as y'all probably recognize my face. And I appreciate being allowed to come to them and learn your processes. And I also want to personally thank you for your service, your time, and your commitment to our city, our community, and our citizens. I truly had just no idea that you come from 6:00 PM till 11:30 AM just about every Monday night. And I've sat through it, and I find it interesting, and I probably still will. Anyway, we appreciate all your attention and patience with us, as we have discussed with you, the reasons why we feel you should deny this rezoning application. To summarize, the property at issue is an infill property requiring more careful attention to its development. The comprehensive plan requires that development of infill property should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods to preserve the character of the community around it. The proposed development is neither compatible with our neighborhoods, nor does it preserve our character. You have heard so many of us speak about our love of our community, including the homes and the green space where we live. The proposed development cuts the sizes of lots from R20 to Rad Conditional, where the requested lot size is 9,000 square feet, less than half the size of a lot should be. The space between the homes can be as close as 10 feet. There is nothing about this development that is consistent with the neighborhood in which it is, sits. We have each carefully gone through the zoning review standards of section, sorry, Section 1508 of Smyrna's zoning ordinance. I'm not going to repeat all that everyone has said, but I would like to point out to you the failures of the rezoning application. We have analyzed zoning standards 2 through 9 for the council. It is clear that the property in question has a very reasonable economic use as it is currently zoned at R20. Actually, it would be quite desirable. The requested rezoning would cause excessive and burdensome use of the streets, utilities, and schools. The zoning is not in conformity with the policy and intent of the land use plan because it is not developed appropriately as an infill property. There are no existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of this property, which would support the rezoning for Rad Conditional. The development, the development would certainly not conform to the open space requirements and aesthetics of our neighborhood. The proposed development at Rad Conditional would create a nuisance and is incompatible with the existing uses in the area. And due to the size of the proposed use, it would negatively affect the adjacent property, general neighborhood, and other uses in the area negatively. Under the law, the rezoning application fails the large majority of zoning standards required by Smyrna's ordinance and the state of Georgia. You have heard a lot of information from the applicant, but much of that information is missing pieces. We, the citizens of the affected community, have worked hard to tell you the rest of the story. We all love our community, and we love this city. We all look forward to being part of Smyrna as it grows and continues to become better and better. We all recognize development as part of that movement, and we do not protest that. We merely seek to see development progress properly, progress properly. For the property in question, the current application should be denied for failing to meet Smyrna's zoning standards. Development should be delayed until such a time as a developer is ready to build the homes on R20 lots. Venture Homes and Mr. Randall have behaved as if this rezoning decision is already made. In fact, Zillow and Trulia have a property listed for the potential development off North Cooper Lake even now. In interest of saving our trees, I have one copy if anyone would like to look. There's one for Zillow and one for Trulia. There are pictures showing where it will be, which is right in our neighborhood. We, however, trust the judgment of our elected council and mayor, and are encouraged that you have been listening to us tonight as we have reviewed the facts and the laws supporting why this rezoning application should be denied. Future developers are watching your decision here. It will be setting a precedent for zoning requests for infill properties. Even now, there is an open lot on Cloudland Drive in Bennett Woods owned by a developer being held empty pending this decision. We strongly encourage you, council, members, and Mayor Bacon, to deny this rezoning request. Again, thank you for your time and your service to our community.
And don't mess this up. It ended pretty good.
Mayor Bacon, it's an honor to be here tonight. And I remember voting for you as a small child. And I have immense respect for you, seriously. And Councilman West has actually been in my backyard stomping around, looking at a drainage problem I have. And, I mean, that shows great commitment and concern and care by the members of this, of this council and by the mayor. And the last thing I wanted to say is, you know, I work for a Fortune 100 company. And, you know, you hear a lot of times in the world that, you know, it's not personal, it's business. But you know what? You know, I hope that you guys will err on the side of the personal on this because there is nothing more personal to the people. And you saw no one stand up in this room that supports this. And I just believe that there are a lot of, there are other, other alternatives. And basically, it's, you know, this, the net of this is, it doesn't pass the sniff test. It really doesn't. When you listen to what all these people have said, and I came in here with an open mind, I really wasn't sure exactly what I thought about it. But after everything I've heard and what I've researched, I just honestly believe and hope the council will vote with, you know, with the members of the community because this is personal. It doesn't get any more personal than this. Thank you.
I think it would be only fair to allow the applicant, if he's got anything that he would like to, to say. We've heard from both sides. But I'll leave this up to Councilman Fennell, which is actually his district. But I mean, But I mean...
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I've sat through and I've listened. There's some good and valid points being made here. But I guess I would, I would also mention to this council that the precedent has already been set. I didn't rezone those properties, all of them down North Cooper Lake Road, RAD. You know, the toothpaste is already out of the tube. I'm forced to compete with those people that are on those lots. Yes, I mean, someone theoretically could come buy the whole 5.68 acres, and I said the values are going to be $7 to $8 million. They could build a $10 million house. Lord, it would tower over those people on Pineview Manor. Yes, it might save a few trees, but I guarantee you, when Pineview Manor was constructed, when, when Bennett Woods was constructed, when all these subdivisions are constructed, trees have to come down. Development and building is a messy, messy business. 450 is just the starting price, because costs have gone up on this project. We're having to do a lot of extraordinary things. The gentleman was quite right when he said $72 a foot, 18 inch pipe going down the middle of the road, he just forgot the milling and paving. That pipe's going to cost us $130,000. So we're going to be building $450,000 houses. We're going to be building $550,000 houses. We will be building houses that are predominantly double, double the average. I don't care if you look at Trulia, I don't care if you look at Zillow, I don't care where you look, of the bulk of the housing in a half mile, draw the, draw the circle. You know, there's a few houses at Austin Lakes, there's one or two houses along North Cooper Lake Road that are on extraordinarily large lots that are higher. But the numbers I've looked at at Bennett Woods, again, it tops out at about $350,000, 400 maybe. How can Economics 101, I'm just a dumb old Georgia boy, I didn't go to Smyrna. I was a Marietta Blue Devil. That's probably why people don't like me. But, you know, economics tells me when you build 450 to 500, you pull up the surrounding neighborhood. You don't bring it down. I could understand a lot of this consternation if, if we were coming in here and proposing seven units to the acre, $200,000 housing price. That's not what we're doing. Our parents are going to be very involved in these schools. Our parents are going to be the ones demanding better schools, better public schools, better private schools. This alleyway is, this alleyway is a public road, which will be dedicated to the city of Smyrna. It's in an 80-foot wide, 80-foot wide corridor. It actually widens, it's a funnel, it kind of widens as you get up to the top. So there's no way that house can be 20 feet away. That house is at closest 32, 35 feet away. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't have the survey. I can get it, I don't have it. That's equivalent to a front yard setback in most places. I did count, the one gentleman stood up and said, oh, it's surrounded by 20 houses. I counted everybody I could count on my plaque, 17. But it's more than just fighting over the semantics. I've tried, as best I know how to try, to, to meet the folks at Bennett Woods and, and Pineview Manor, and all the rest of the folks that have been opposed to this thing. We've had numerous town hall meetings. I met with anyone and everyone who would meet with me. And we've made tremendous compromises. We're putting in screening and buffering that no other developer builder in this town that I'm aware of has been willing to do. The pond has to be fenced. We're worried about children's safety. Of course we'll fence that pond, we'll screen it with, with landscaping. The houses can't be more than 35 feet, that not, our typical two-story house is 29 feet, 28 feet. The typical one-story ranch is probably 17, 18 feet tall. They have to have a roof with a pitch on it too. Now, back in the day, people built 5, 612 roof pitches. Now we build 812, 1012. That's just the architecture. That's going to raise that house up a little bit more. But it's not going to be dramatic, and we're buffering it. Again, I would ask this council to give me the same consideration, the same shot at a level playing field that you've given all my predecessors. I appreciate your time tonight, I appreciate all the people who spoke. If this property is approved, we will do our utmost to be a great neighbor. I've taken nothing for granted on this deal. Someone said, oh, they act like it's fait accompli. It is absolutely not fait accompli. I'm frankly scared to death. We've got thousands of dollars invested in this thing. Hydro studies that we've never done before, arborists that we've never had to hire before. But that's a risk I'm willing to take because I want to be a part of Smyrna. That hasn't changed my drive and desire to be a part of Smyrna and be a good citizen. We're voting with our pocketbook, just like everybody in this room has voted with their pocketbook. And we want to be a good neighbor. No plan is perfect, this plan is far from perfect. But I think we've done our best and the best effort that I know how to make it as compatible and as perfect as it can be. And I would ask for your support. And take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the public hearing portion. I'll turn it over to Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know some of my colleagues will want to make some comments as we deliberate on this, and this is our time to deliberate. We really haven't on this issue yet in this whole process. If you can believe that, this panel has never deliberated on this matter. This will be the first time tonight. Zoning matters, as was pointed out earlier, get emotional. And I understand particularly Mr. Dunn and Mr. Betts, you can talk about not in my backyard, the NIMBY rule, well, this is in their backyard, this is directly affecting them, as it does some of the others of you as well. So I understand the emotion. I tell you, the 24 people who spoke tonight, I am impressed, not that it's new to me to be impressed by Smyrnans. I'm not native here. I grew up down on the coast. I, I had the privilege of growing up on St. Simon's and in Brunswick. And I married a girl who happened to live in Smyrna Heights, and I liked to bed down nearby, and she lets me. So I ended up in Smyrna as quickly as, as I could get here. And when I moved here, we moved from my house in Smyrna, I mean, in Atlanta, to Smyrna, by choice. We could have moved to Buckhead, or Roswell, or Sandy Springs, or Alpharetta, or any other place. But I, we chose here because of the nature of the people, the communities we saw, and the people we met who welcomed us readily. I'm proud of that about Smyrna. It endeared me immediately to Smyrna. She already lived here, she already knew, but I didn't. And when I learned, it made me want to be here even more. I paid too much for my house when I moved in, in '08. I bought it at the peak of the market. I live in one of these houses that you're opposing. I, I live in one of this type of house, this very size and type and price of house. Maybe I, maybe I'm not welcome here as a result. But I live in a community that was built on RAD conditional. My entire ward for the next four years is on the other side of the Silver Comet Trail that didn't exist in Smyrna 20 years ago. We were in unincorporated Cobb County. So the entirety of my district for the next four years, a good chunk of it is RAD. RAD is a tool the city has employed for over 36 years, effectively, at controlling and building a sustained value around development with stipulations and controls that a standard block, R-15, R-20, or R-30 does not grant. So I think this tool has been an excellent tool for the city. Maybe not every city in America who's had something like this has enjoyed what we have that we have. I've held two town hall meetings that weren't required under the zoning process. I had 85 people at the first one, I had 32 besides the staff and the applicant at the second one. There are tons of questions that come out of an application if you've never been through this process before. We see an average of a couple of these a month. So for those of you that this is your first one, I can understand the degree of either frustration or confusion, or the legal wranglings around it. It's, it's a daunting proposition to consider this kind of application. That's why we have a process. That's why we have a comprehensive plan. That's why we go through this arduous process to get us to this point. The staff evaluates an application when it comes in. We never see that application here as the purest application that came in the front door. It's been managed and manipulated by both staff and planning and zoning to try to accommodate concerns or challenges relative to either zoning procedures, our comprehensive plan, details around mitigation, whether it's water, it's traffic, it's any of the other factors. And I've heard several people say tonight that this does not meet the zoning factor 2 through 9. Well, it got past two gauntlets to get to this point where it was decided that, in fact, it did, in the judgment of those two predecessor organizations to get to us, that it did meet those. I appreciate that we're having an open discussion about some of our challenges related to education. I have two young sons. Their education is my mission in life. I want them to reach adulthood, be adequately prepared, not just academically, and I'm working very hard and trying to make sure that I do prepare them there. But I'm trying to raise these young men as true patriots in our country. And I'm proud of both of them. They're nine and seven. And Cindy and I worked very hard to get to this point. We work hard for our, our money so we can pay for things they need. And I know you do too. For those of you who had the privilege of growing up in Smyrna that I didn't, I understand your passion, and I appreciate it. Of all the communities, the neighborhoods, that I walked whenever I was running for this seat four years ago, I had the biggest challenge, but the biggest surprise, and the most joy out of walking Bennett Woods. For three reasons. One, it reminded me of home and where I grew up, in a split-level ranch. Secondly, I was following behind a long tradition. Never in the history of the city of Smyrna in Ward 7 has someone been elected that was not a resident of Bennett Woods until I came along. Never had happened. There were two Bennett Woods residents running in this four-person race in an open seat to try to follow behind, weakly I might add, one of, you know, one of Smyrna's heroes in Pete Wood. And Pete and Lily and many of you in this room were very kind to help me. And your graciousness in welcoming me to Smyrna was all the more reason why I wanted to sit in this post and represent you. It has been very difficult these last few weeks to hear some of the vitriol and some of the anger and some of the frustration directed at me or these prospective 15 new homeowners that would be coming to Smyrna. Had I heard that, I may, may not have felt as welcomed. And that frustrates me and disappoints me a little bit, because that's not the, the group of people that I was embraced by, that I came here to be a part of. And I appreciate the civility with, with which tonight has proceeded. I'm just sharing with you what, over the last several weeks, I have experienced, both I've read every letter, every email, heard every voicemail. By law, we can't opine before we get to this very point. So I know it frustrated some of you that I wouldn't say I'm opposed to it, or I'm for it upfront. Some of you made those assumptions wrongly. I have been weighing this very carefully over the last few months. I was surprised, frankly, when we had the applications in for the previous North Cooper Lake applications, that I didn't hear any outcry, frustration, traffic comments, any of those things to the, to the extent that we're having here. Those were more homes than these 15. This property, you could build 12, R-20, some say 10. Okay, let's do the math. Let's say it's only eight. You're fighting over seven homes differential maximum out of this, and I have never seen our community in such an uproar over that minimal amount of, of new homeowners. And it's frustrating to me. Secondly, we have been growing as a city rapidly. How many of you here were here in 1950? What was the population then, Max?
I was just two years old.
Yeah, he couldn't count yet. He were 30. We were about 10,000 people maybe in 1950, a little bit less than that. Georgia and Atlanta, the metro region, and Smyrna have grown disproportionately among jurisdictions around the country. There's no question. We've had to manage growth in a different way. Couple of people made points about the seminal developments like Belmont and Johnquill. Yeah, there were applications in the past that weren't approved, but we have approved those two developments. We have approved the North Cooper Lake developments. We did approve the Tackett Farm developments. I had two people who had challenges with it, both of them bordering with water pipe issues, and I'm convinced that we resolved both of those to their satisfaction. And frankly, all of those border Bennett Woods. This property, as I look at it, borders Bennett Woods, but the property that's next to Howard Betts does sit in Bennett Woods proper by cordoning it off. And as one woman at the first town hall meeting says, why don't we build a, a fence, a brick fence, four or eight foot high around this? And I asked the question, I said, who are you expecting to buy these homes? The Visigoths? What are you going to call these people when they move in? No matter if it's 12 homes, 10 homes, or 15 homes. You know what you're going to call them? Neighbor. These people want to come to Smyrna, they're people dying to move to Smyrna every day. I get calls all the time, when am I going to be able to move to Smyrna? I usher them to the nearest Realtor and try to get them into my neighborhood, but we, we have a challenge in Smyrna. There's a certain charm to who we are. People want to be here. I don't think we're luring ne'er-do-wells to come to this area. We're talking about sending a signal to the development community tonight with this vote. Either we're welcoming or we're not on development, and I heard many of you say we're not against development. Well, that's the signal this sends, because according to my reading of the nine zoning factors that keep being referred to, and I know you have a, an able counsel who's giving you good legal advice tonight, but the reality is, that's an opinion. We all have opinions, we're all blessed with that in this country, we can have opinions. I want this to be a positive outcome for everybody. Should this be denied tonight? Somebody could come in here tomorrow with an application for 12 homes, R-20, and build them. They could do that without coming through this panel, and they wouldn't have to go through planning and zoning. They could, they could do that. It is my reading of what a couple people said, that it would crowd our schools. I shared the mayor's opinion earlier about how important it is for us to be partners with our school system. But we don't make those decisions. If you look at your tax bill, the school board gets the most money, the county gets the next most money, and Smyrna gets the least amount of money. And we strongly believe in the education of our children. Why do you think the scores are going up at King Springs and, and Argyle and Nicahack? Why do you think those scores are going up? I'll tell you why they are in, at Nicahack, because kids coming out of my neighborhood in Bynning's Estates are going... Estates are going to school there, and they have two-parent families who are engaged in their kids' lives, they're working with them after school, and they're actually bringing money to the table to help create the foundation, which they've done. I've been to both of the Nicahack Elementary Open Houses this past week, and they're in good financial condition. They're buying supplies to augment what the school system isn't providing. Those scores are going up because these kids are performing in those schools and helping to bring the average up. These are the new families, just like mine, that came to Smyrna because we loved the community that it is, and we're adding our time, our talents, and our resources to this community as well. We're Smyrnans just like somebody who's lived here since 1902. A lot more people want to be here. If you have the Internet, you realize, you heard the names Zillow and other names. If you have the Cobb County GIS map, every developer, every developer knows that Smyrna is hot and they want to be here. Every available square inch of dirt in Smyrna has already been posted on every developer's board. They're all interested in being here. Our challenge is to find quality product, quality builders who want to be here and that we want to have here for a long time to come. None of us want to make a mistake and find somebody who's going to build shabbily or not to our standards. We've been very careful about that, and I think we're being careful by considering this application as well. I have two more points, and then I'd like to hear from my colleagues. Traffic. Throughput on traffic coming through this community from West Cobb, Paulding, and Douglas County is the primary cause of our traffic in Smyrna. Look around, read the tags, get out there. North Cooper Lake is unique, but it is not overcrowded. If you look at the capacity, I understand, and I've actually been to Ms. Sudra's house, have been in her home, and she's been very kind in the past to allow me to have a sign out there, so I understand what she's saying. There are challenges with rush hour traffic. There are challenges with a few individuals who are not obeying the speed laws. If you see somebody speeding, you know, police chief back there will tell you, "Call 911." If they're reckless, we can stop them. We have a challenge, however, in that within municipalities, you can't use radar on speed detection. That's a challenge. We build roads after the fact, sadly, in America. The capacity numbers get studied and reported back, and then we deal with that. We will be addressing those types of issues down the road, particularly as we've done in other parts of the city. I think the best suggestion I heard specifically was regarding the intersection of North Cooper Lake and Concord for some sort of signalization that might help there. That makes a lot of sense for us to consider in the near term, and I hope we take a closer look at that very soon, regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote. I'm going to allow my colleagues to weigh in on this before I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, if that's the appropriate way to go.
Any comments? Any council member? I think they want the motion. Let's see a motion, see what we got with it.
So for consideration of this application, I weighed the nine zoning factors. I listened to all of my constituents. I also studied the history of Smyrna, knowing that all of those RAD conditional zonings nearby within the comprehensive plan have been approved and operational. The Austin Lakes ones, over 20, nearly 22 years now. My neighborhood, 20 years now, approaching 20 years. So it is not inconsistent with that plan. By the word density, several people have made this out to be high-density. It is not. It falls within the acceptable limits of what is the comprehensive plan's speculation, so they're not changing the zoning relative to the comprehensive plan. They have, above anybody I have seen come before this panel in my four years, they have gone out of their way to add stipulations and meet with constituents and add elements to their project that were not required either by staff or by the Planning and Zoning Board or not requested by any member of council, but they were requested by you, the neighbors. As I see it, this is a one-way-in, one-way-out cul-de-sac. It does not circulate in Bennett Woods at all. It does not touch it. In fact, with the insistence on trees, you have, in effect, forced them to isolate it from Bennett Woods effectively as an island unto itself, which is what the desire of many of you was. I personally think that's unfortunate, but that's what has been agreed to by the applicant. Someone referred to this as an ugly eyesore. I can't see where's a $500,000 house is going to be an ugly eyesore or devalue anybody's property, and I challenged those eight Realtors to step forward and publicly put that on the record that they think this would devalue their homes. I had one of the contiguous neighbors call me on my way here to this meeting tonight on Pineland to tell me, "Please, please vote for this." I've had a lot of people who want to live in Smyrna tell me they want to vote for this. So with that, Mr. Mayor, for discussion purposes, to get the council to weigh in on their views, I move approval.
I have a motion to approve this zoning request. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Pritchett. Is there any other discussion?
On our screens is Z15. Yeah, there it is.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Welch?
I think you all for coming. Most of you are my neighbors, some of you closer than others. Ms. Johnson, I think you're very close to me. You're right behind me, I believe. I've been very careful to listen to the evidence since the very beginning of this. I've taken emails, I've visited the site three times. I responded to some emails that had questions and telephone calls, and I've, like I said, I've viewed all the evidence that's been put before me. And tried to consider both sides of this issue, and there are two sides to the issue. There's good and there's bad about this development and about this rezoning. And, you know, I can see the good in it, and I'll get to the point here in just a minute, but some of the assessments tonight of these nine items have been right on target. Others, we may have been stretching it a little bit. But, you know, in my own mind, I have to weigh, you know, is it fair for us to add to one's benefit when we're taking away from someone else? And there are properties out there that I really do feel to approve this zoning is going to be a detriment to those property values. I've visited with them. But at the same time, we have to be very careful what you ask for. There are negatives that might come with that that I'm not sure that you really want. If this zoning stays R20 like it is, I've told several people, you know, we can take a street from North Cooper, right? North Cooper Lake, straight to Havelon, and you get a new cut through Bennett Woods. And if it stays R20, it won't come back before us, and there's nothing that we can do about that. So be very careful. The heights aren't going to change of the houses to go to R20. You know, from Mr. Dunn's perspective, the location of the entrance is probably not going to change. The trees are still going to be cut down, and the schools are still going to be impacted, even with an R20 that we're looking at and doing nothing to. Despite that, you know, I don't plan on supporting this rezoning, simply based on the fact that I do believe that there are several of the zoning review standards that have not been adhered to, and that's the reason I don't plan on supporting it. That's it.
Any other comments? Just another one.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I have a few things. I'm impressed, first of all, with how thoughtfully and coherently all the speakers tonight made their case. There was a level of coherence and organization that I really appreciate, and it's clear how much time and energy has gone into the conversations tonight. I also think that there seems to be a general understanding that if this zoning is not approved tonight, there will be another request to put houses on this property. There will be another request that comes in sooner or later to develop this property. It seems like everyone gets that. This is not going to stay an undeveloped tract of land for all eternity. Something is going to be built here, and like Mr. Welch said, there are going to be more houses, there are going to be more cars, there are going to be more kids. That is a straight-up inevitability, in my opinion. Now, I'll also say that between this and the upcoming election, this is a good time to be in the sign business. It is tempting to use the soundbite "rad is bad" without really explaining what the rad zoning category is, and I have said this to several of the folks in the audience tonight. I think that there's been a little bit of a disservice done in the public information and outreach that's happened with regards to this issue because a lot of people are saying rad is bad without really defining what rad is. And I think rad's actually pretty much a good thing. You know, without RAD conditional rezoning, we wouldn't have a lot of the developments that have been transformative and will continue to be transformative. You can bring up the example of the Hickory Lakes apartments that were purchased by the city and taken down and are now going to be, through RAD conditional rezoning, are going to be a community that is going to absolutely flat-out improve Smyrna. It's going to improve our schools. It already has improved our schools. I think that's a fact. I think it can't be, I think it's a difficult thing to refute that that wasn't a good thing and that that happened because of RAD conditional zoning. So I, and I appreciate that tonight, there hasn't been, there haven't been people coming up and just saying, "Rad is bad, I don't like it." End of story. These arguments have been thoughtfully organized, and I do appreciate that because I think there's a lot more to RAD conditional zoning than it being a bad thing, because I don't think it is a bad thing. I think, though, it is something that has to be viewed, each case has to be viewed individually and on their own merits. Now, I don't think this is a high-density development, and I think that that's been covered tonight. You know, there are, there's the subjective, "Well, I think there's a lot of houses there, so I'm going to call it high-density," and then there's the technical and legal definition of high-density, and it's clear that by that rationale, this is not a high-density development. The David Weekly Homes that are being built over at Belmont, those are 15.8 units per acre, that's a high-density development. This is not a high-density development. Now, going down to the schools, I am uncomfortable with the concept of voting against a development of this size, and by this size, I mean compared to some of the things that we've had in other parts of Smyrna. This is not that big. That doesn't diminish the fact that it is that big to y'all because this is your neighborhood and you live there, but just technically speaking, we have done bigger developments. Now, talking about the schools, one of the things that the city council did many moons ago was to implement an apartment moratorium here in Smyrna. That, to me, is an example of the government interfering in the marketplace, and the result of that interference was that for many years, we had no new apartments coming in to compete in the marketplace in Smyrna. The result of that was that we had a lot of really lousy apartment complexes in Smyrna with no market incentive to compete and to improve themselves, and that was a big, bad thing for our schools and for our property values and for our community. That situation is changing. It's been rectified. There is no longer an apartment moratorium, so now you can have market competition, and we once again have Class A multifamily developments coming into Smyrna, which I believe is really critical if you're going to maintain your community's relevance in metro Atlanta. Now, that said, that's why I'm not comfortable voting against a development because I don't want new people coming into our schools. I've heard some of that rhetoric during the course of the discussions with regard to this development. I think it's exclusionary, and I think it's dangerous, and the reason why I think it's dangerous is because the reason a lot of people wanted to move to this area and to these schools is because they were the kinds of families that wanted to come in and improve the schools. I think it's dangerous and not necessarily a great decision to exclude families from coming into our schools. And we're not talking about a Vining's Estates-sized subdivision. We're talking about, you know, I mean, how many kids would be moving? I think the school argument, frankly, is not one that's really moving me. And I also want to point out that, yeah, no one in the audience stood up in support, but I know I'm not the only person who has heard from people in support of this, and I also know that I'm hopefully not the only person who's voting simply by a head count, as my wonderful, darling husband likes to point out, "When you only listen to the people who are in the room, what you get is a dead Jesus." And I know we don't want to go down that path. So all of that, and it's late, and I know it, but all of that is to say that you've made a really compelling case here tonight. There are compelling things that have been said on both sides of this argument, and this is a toughie. I mean, this really is, and I don't want to understate that because I think that you can look at all of these zoning stipulations and the legal stipulations, and you can say on one side, "Yeah, these have been met." And you can also make a compelling case that with some of them, it hasn't been met. So, you know, this is tough, and I'm going to have to go with my conscience on this one, which I always do, but this is, this one I have found to be tougher than normal.
Anyone else?
Yes, thank you. So one of the things that I've heard everybody, and I appreciate everybody's talking about all the points and everything, and some of them I agree with and some of them I don't, but one of the things that I'm uncomfortable about approving this project is because by creating that road from North Cooper Lake into the property, it seems that it creates a non-conforming R20 lot with, I think it's Mr. Dunn's property, and I just, I'm not comfortable with that, and I just feel like there, you know, there should be another way, even if it's, you know, purchasing his property if he wanted to sell it, but to actually create a non-conforming R20 lot by approving this development, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Anyone else? Mr. Lineker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've studied the issues and listened to all sides in this debate, not just tonight, but over the last several weeks or a month or so. I've studied the zoning criteria and considered them. I don't agree with all the staff recommendations associated with those criteria. Some I do, some I don't. And just like at home, sometimes good people, even husbands and wives, can have differences of opinions and disagree about what things mean or what the really important things that I should be doing are. And that doesn't mean you're a bad person. It means you just evaluate the criteria, and based on your frame of reference and life experience, you reach a different conclusion. I am concerned about some of the zoning criteria and the impacts covered by them. I do want to say Sean Randall has tried hard. I know I met with him yesterday on relatively short notice to try to get the latest update from his perspective exactly. You know, I wasn't at the meeting last week with a number of the residents. Where exactly are we? What's the latest plan? Show me the latest site plan. Tell me all the issues. On a relatively short notice on holiday, he made arrangements to come to Smyrna and meet with me and spend an hour and bring me up to speed, and I appreciate that. Not every developer in the world or every businessperson will do that for you. I don't care who you are, and I thank Mr. Randall for that. I'm also very proud of the residents who spoke tonight. They didn't surprise me at all. I've seen this time and time again. I last saw it two years ago when we were voting on Johnquill Plaza. Smyrna residents always amaze me and make me proud. They're well-spoken, they're kind-hearted, they're good-mannered. They make me proud to be a part of this community. Every single speaker that got up tonight, you know, including Mr. Randall, presented their points cogently, sagely, you know, with passion and with energy, and we need to be able to have that kind of adult conversation in our community before... to be able to have that kind of adult conversation in our community before we can go anywhere. I mean, if we can't have that kind of discussion and communication, and if we're not paying attention and listening, and listening to each other, then we're, we're never going to get anything done. I, I do agree that RAD zoning is not bad in and of itself. I can tell you as an Army Ranger, I can take this pen and, and kill a person with it, but that doesn't make the pen bad. If I use it in a bad way, then that's the problem. RAD is just one tool in our zoning kit, that if we do something bad with it, if we use it stupidly, then yes, we can do harm, but if used properly, it can produce most of the new neighborhoods that we've seen in Smyrna in the last 20 years. It can produce the Market Village, it can produce the cottages around the library, it can produce a lot of neighborhoods that everybody loves. So I just, I just say that RAD is not bad by itself, but what I'm hearing from the community in this conversation is maybe we need to have a conversation with the community about zoning criteria and standards. Maybe we need to talk among ourselves and decide what kind of zoning criteria we want to have when we grow up. When Smyrna becomes the next Smyrna, whatever that is, what are the zoning criteria that we want to use to make those decisions? And if we need to adjust, or talk about that, or educate, or, or listen to each other, you know, I'll tell you, I'll commit right now, under certain circumstances, we'll have that conversation next year if I'm back. Let's work together, let's work together to figure out how we need to use our zoning criteria to allow developers to develop, to bring new people to Smyrna, to bring the families that we want to attract, and also to protect the families that are here. In terms of the apartment moratorium, I voted for it then, and I'd vote for it again, frankly. I thought that was a good thing. I think the key to apartments, long-term, is enforcing our codes and standards to make sure the owners keep them safe and livable and clean, and to do all the things to protect those residents and their quality of life. In terms of this zoning, again, I'm struggling a little bit with what Mr. Fennel said. We really do have a very important choice. We can do a conditional RAD zoning with a lot of stipulations and a lot of protections, or we can risk an R-20 zoning with no stipulations and no additional protections. A street coming off of Richland Court, or Havelon, or even all the way through, but what I'm hearing from the community tonight is, you're less afraid of that than what you are here. And as I evaluate the criteria, I keep coming back to things in these criteria that, that I'm concerned about. I'll just say that. So, so I, I am not going to support the motion to approve it, and I would ask the mayor, as did one of our speakers, if, if the motion were to pass, I would ask the mayor to veto it. That's what I would do. Thank you.
I, I just want to address a couple of quick things. I'm not going to play politics with, with people's homes and their livelihood and where you live at, but I will agree with Mr. Lenick. But we've already started to do it. We met last week for the first time with the Planning and Zoning Board and the council together, to look at our zoning ordinance, to find if there, if there are sections in there that we don't really need, or maybe we need to change. So, we've already started that, and you were at the meeting, Mr. Lenick, along with everyone on this council was there, along with the Planning and Zoning Board. And it was a great start toward, I think, looking at that rad category, to see if we need categories like that. Rad has not been that bad. In some cases, yes. I think what this has done for all of us is that so many folks have really gotten involved in issues that they have never gotten involved before. And, yeah, we've passed a lot of zonings up here where there was very little, if any, opposition. Did that make it good or bad? No. We should always vote and approve things based on the merit that is before us, not because there's 100 people here against it, or 200 people for, or if nobody shows up. And I'll say this, we had very few people show up at the Concord Road and Highway Drive, the Tackett Farms. That was 35 homes, I think. Was that good zoning? You know, we had one person here in opposition to it. I'm still concerned about those things that affect us once new development comes in. And I will tell you this, it doesn't make any difference if it's R-20, R-15, R-12, RAD, but in order to get the infrastructure in that new development, you're going to have to pretty much table-grade everything. The trick is, is to get that good infrastructure in. The key thing is, is to replace those trees that you've taken now with good, healthy trees, but make sure that you don't damage property that's adjoining to it or downstream from it. And Eric Randall, our guy struggles with that every day, making sure that our system will take care of any additional runoff, whether it be commercial or residential or, or whatever. But anyway, this election, you're absolutely, but I am, I will never, ever play you, never. I promise you that. Any other comments? Ms. Bluestein.
I finally gave up and decided I'd speak too. Oh, by the way, the reason I keep jumping up, I've been driving for seven hours today to get here for the meeting tonight. I drove from Memphis to, to here, and I'm beside myself. I can't, you know, I was very impressed by how thoughtful and succinct, in most cases, the different people that spoke were. I mean, you'd given it a lot of thought, you, and you could tell you gave it a lot of thought, and, and I just feel that some, when you have a petition, not, not just the petition, when you have that many people so concerned about something that is going to affect their neighborhood, or, or prospectively to affect their neighborhood, then you have to listen. You know, you either, you don't have to necessarily agree with everything that they say, but you at least have to give them some latitude and all, in the fact that they were, Bennett Woods is one of, for a community that size, and for the age of the houses and all, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful community, and you do a very good job, and, and especially not having an HLA or something like that, in keeping the property up and keeping it, you know, it's something desirable to live there. So, I hope whatever decision comes out of this tonight, that it's something that we do. We need to, we need to, in January, really address some of this and make it, bring it up to more today's standards than what it was. You know, this is, some of this is '07, '06, somewhere in there, and maybe we need to readdress it. In fact, definitely, we need to readdress it, but please know that we've, that whatever this decision is, it was thought out, you know? We tried to, tried to do the best for everyone involved. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll make one last one, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Just make...
I think for folks in this room who may not like the decision I've made, I still love you and Smyrna, and I want you to understand, I would do nothing to hurt a neighborhood that I enjoy as much as Bennett Woods. We can differ, but we shouldn't hate each other, and we should consider the alternatives and the what's next, because there is a what's next, as has been pointed out in this. Somebody's going to come to develop this piece of property. They don't have to come before this panel ever again if they want to go R-20 and do other things. Just keep that in mind. I feel as if, the conclusion I had to draw was this was the best plan we could get by a developer on this site to help meet the needs of the Bennett Woods neighborhood, and to continue to protect our standard and our quality in the community. That's it.
We have a motion second to, to approve. All those in favor of the motion, please vote.
Might know one more person. That is, that's, the motion is four to three. Do we need, Scott, do we need a motion to? Let's see. This is, the motion is denied, and the zoning is rejected. Four, three, vote.
All right, let's, okay, let's, come on now. We got, let's see, what do we got? Hold on. Previous licenses, we have none. That's item five. Item six is formal business. Seven is commercial building permits, we have none. Eight is consent agenda. Will you please read the consent agenda for council approval, Mr. Jones? And while he's just, I thank everyone for, I know y'all are ready to go home, we're going to be here a couple more hours. Thank y'all for the way that y'all conducted yourself, and anyway, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
We have on the consent agenda, item A, approval of the meeting minutes for the mayor and council meeting from August 17th, 2015. Item B is approval to purchase a Motorola 800 megahertz TDMA mobile portable desktop and consulate radios for police and fire at a 37.5% discount off the state contract price, a total cost of $1,130,544.80, and the installation through diversified electronics at a cost of $28,700, for a total purchase price of $1,159,244.80. Again, this is, this is an item that you had taken action on back in August 3rd. What's in front of you is essentially a 2.5% additional savings if we move this purchase up. Item C is approval of a 10K event that was approved as an 11K run for Zone 5. The event's changed its name to Smyrna Village 10K for November 14th, to begin at 8:00 a.m. in Smyrna at the Roundabout for approximately 500 runners, and will end at 11:00 a.m. This is another item that, that you had previously taken action on, it's back before you, because the event name has changed. And lastly, on the consent agenda, item D, approval to use council chambers for a Ward One Town Hall meeting by council member Melanie Pritchett. That'll be held on Tuesday, September 22nd, from 6:30 until 9:00 p.m. That's two weeks from today.
Do you hear most? We approve the consent agenda's approval. Motion's second. All those in favor of the motion? We got two more people have not voted. Prove seven zero. Committee reports will start tonight. Mr. Ron Fennel.
Both of the department heads earlier, I did want to announce that on September 22nd, I'm having a town hall meeting in the Vining's Estates community at the Summit Clubhouse regarding a couple of proposed annexations on that side of town and a zoning matter. Summit Clubhouse, 7:00 p.m., 9:22. I also want to thank those folks who participated in the 5K run yesterday, and I want to thank those who have supported and will continue to support by the gala this weekend of the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation, and I urge you to support your public safety officials every opportunity you can.
Mr. Lenick.
No report, Your Honor.
Ms. Wilkinson.
No report, thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Very briefly, I just need to announce that I will not be here for the September 21st meeting. It is Cobb County Fall Break, and my wife says I'm not going to be here.
Ms. Nalowicz.
Who's talking?
Ms. Nalowicz, you got anything you want to say?
I don't have that.
Okay. Mrs. Bluestein.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that I'm going to have a Ward Two meeting October the 3rd, from 10:00 to noon at the library, and I hope you can make it. Thank you.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are going to, I'm going to have a Ward One meeting, which was on the consent agenda. It's going to be September the 22nd, here in Council Chambers, from 6:30 till 9:00. There's several items that we're going to discuss, give you updates on, and then listen to the community and hear their voice to what they're looking forward to in the next four years. The latest developments with the Braves, our community safety, and school choice are three items that are on that agenda. So, hope you can be there, and thank you very much.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything?
No.
Ms. Cochran. Ms. Graham, you've already done yours. We do not have a showcase hearing. Citizens input, or citizens sign up. Elick Bakris, 3459, Shawnee Trail comments. Derek Norton.
I have a...
Allison, he's not here.
His wife's water broke, and he rushed to the hospital.
Okay. Thank you for that medical information. Susan Wilkinson, 2805 Stone Creek, running for council.
Hi, my name is Susan Wilkinson, and like the mayor said, I live on Stone Creek Road in Chenewood subdivision, and I guess it's one of the Chenewood slabs that were referred to tonight, but I've lived there for 29 years, and I want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the council and to serve the citizens of Ward Five, and I've said this, and I really mean it, and tonight really brought it home to me, that the people of Smyrna and the people of Ward Five are the city's greatest assets, and I really have enjoyed serving them and getting to know them, and I look forward to running again. That's what, I'm announcing my run for reelection. Thank you.
Jerry Jacobs of 3450, at Hawkins Glen Court, running for council, Ward Five.
Most of you already know me, and I'd just like to say, I have announced my candidacy. I have been the Ward Five Code Enforcement Officer for the last four years, five of which I have served this city. As Ms. Bullock had announced today, I have just come up on my fifth year as employee of the city. I love this city. I'm from New York originally.
You're kidding. I would never have known by that accent.
Where I retired from the New York City Police Department after 20 years of service. I did three years in Kennesaw as a lieutenant here in Georgia as well.
Hold on one second. Can y'all just let Mr. Jacobs do his thing? He's, go ahead. I'm sorry, Jerry.
Okay. And as I said, my wife and I, Joyce, we share a beautiful home in the Ennis Brook subdivision in Ward Five, that's right off of Concord and Church Road. I lived here, like I said, for 14 years. I love it here in this city. As, as Susan mentioned, I am very proud resident of the city, and I'm proud to serve the city as I have for the last five years, and I want to continue to do so, and in the capacity of the councilperson for Ward Five. And I thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. I think that concludes everyone who signed up for the, there's no other business to be brought before this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at 11:38.